Okay, am I on? Kill the sound? Kill the music? Okay, let's pull it together. Welcome to the Lancaster City Council meeting. City Clerk.
Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Member Molly.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Underwood Jacobs.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Chris.
Present.
Mayor Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
So, did you guys learn that "present" thing at college?
We did. Smart people say that.
Oh, okay. I was just curious. So, who's doing the invocation?
We did not have someone sign up, so you're welcome to call on our House Chaplain. I think this is his third and last one.
Okay. You know, if we're gonna have a House Chaplain, we oughta pay him. You know that?
I second that motion. Our Father in Heaven and our most gracious and merciful Lord Jesus, I pray, Lord, that you would just help all of us to slow down a little bit here tonight. Lord, your word says that we should be still and know that you are God. Lord, your word also says that where two or more are gathered in your name, there you are with us. And, Lord God, I pray that you would put that on our hearts here tonight. Lord, as deliberations take place, as discussions are had, and as decisions are made, I pray, Lord God, that you are glorified in all of them. I pray, Lord, that the attitudes of everyone here, whether they are behind the dais or in front of it, I pray, Lord God, that you are glorified in the hearts of the people here tonight. I pray, Lord Jesus, that this meeting would be an edifying experience for all those who are here. I pray, Lord, that you would empower our leaders, Lord, with the wisdom that surpasses all understanding. And, Lord Jesus, I pray that you would anoint them by your Spirit, Lord, to know your wisdom and your plan and your purpose, Lord, in their decision-making. Lord, that they would see your name lifted high above every high and lofty ideal that would seek to exalt itself against you, Lord God. I pray that you would anoint all of the citizens here tonight, Lord, to speak with care and concern on the things that may be weighing on their hearts here tonight as well, Lord God. And I pray that both elected and citizens alike would seek your kingdom first, that your will would be done here as it is in heaven, Lord God. We love you and we serve you, and we pray all this in your name.
I didn't say we were paying you by the hour. Now you get to do the Pledge of Allegiance. That too?
You say it like it's punishment, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. This is Britt. You wanna come up? So, you wrote this?
No.
So, how come you gave Mark all the really cool stuff to say? And I'm just kinda biographical.
I didn't control what you did to Mark.
Okay. Ooh. Under the bus. At least it was a BYD bus. This is Britt.
Abbott. Abbott.
Abbott. I'm the mayor, I'll tell you what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
She is our city clerk. But she's not just any city clerk. Out of 14,000 and some odd hundred cities that belong to the clerk's group, she is one of the master clerks, as of when? Loudly. That's a really big deal, because there's only 1,000 of them. And, you know, when you get to be master clerk, Mark, you make more money. And Britt tells me that...
Because she's highly compensated?
You gave her a nice award. But no more money. So, in the spirit of a town hall meeting, I think we should vote. How many think Britt should get more money?
They're family, they can't vote.
Okay. Doesn't that tell you anything?
There's something in the works.
I want a commitment.
There's something in the works.
Okay. And now, I'll turn it over to Mark.
Well, first off, if Bill and Emily would come up and join us. This is one of Bill and Britt's three daughters, Emily, Paraclete High School. Junior year. Junior sophomore year. The mayor's correct, Britt is not just any city clerk. Britt is not just any colleague. She is someone that people enjoy working with. She cares deeply about her community. She doesn't confine herself to what the responsibilities of her job are. She sees herself as one of the leadership of the whole city, and she makes the entire city and city staff better. It is a true pleasure to work with someone like Britt. I am very fortunate that she's younger than me, so she'll be here as long as I'm here, and could not be more proud of Britt. To do this, this isn't just write a check and get a certificate. You have to pursue continuing education. You have to prove that you have a commitment beyond your profession. You have to be at the top 10% of your profession. And that's what our city clerk is. And you folks are lucky to have her as a public servant for the city of Lancaster.
No, no. Thank you very much for your kind words, it was very, very nice, thank you. No, I'm not giving speech.
Here goes the race.
Come on!
Mark, get in the picture.
No, you don't want that.
How cool is that? I'm a mayor, I guess to make proclamations. I mean, I could've thought of something on my own and done it, right?
That would be scary.
Tonight, it's my honor to proclaim March 20 through 24 as the Southern California Aerospace Days. Initiated by Southern California Aerospace Council, the inaugural Southern California Aerospace Days highlight the aerospace and defense industry's vital impact on our region's economy. You know, today I was giving a... I was doing something with one of the robotics teams, and the LA media was asking why Lancaster. Well, why Lancaster is because of this. We have the richest culture of engineering and innovative creation of anywhere in the country. And we sometimes forget that. And we owe all of that to aerospace, because it created the Antelope Valley. And that culture stayed with us, in good times, bad times. Now we get to build the B... What is it, the B-21?
Next-generation bomber.
He doesn't even know. How many people know what it is? It's the B-21, right? I mean, how cool is that? So, I think it's appropriate that we have an Antelope Valley Aerospace Week. And we owe all that we are to them, actually. And so, it's my pleasure, but we... Who do I give this to? Anybody else want a proclamation while I'm up here?
Okay, Joe Walker, where are you? Come on down. So, where's your robot? Did you bring the robot? You go get the robot.
Just use Mark. Come on, stand behind me. Everybody can see you. This is the Joe Walker Middle School Science Jet Robotics Team, right? For winning the Los Angeles Regional First LEGO League Robotic Championship last December. They're sixth and eighth graders. They programmed the robot to do whatever it does autonomously. Who's gonna tell me what it does?
We got like a board, and it does different missions with the boards, lifting stuff and pushing stuff. There's a lot of... It's more complicated than that, but... There's a lot of different things the robot...
But it does it autonomously, right?
Yes, it all does it autonomously.
And it doesn't fall off autonomously, right?
No.
Okay, great. My wife just got me one of those robotic drones, you know? The one with the camera, and goes way up there. And, I mean, even I can use it. Because when I lose it and I can't see it anymore, I press a button, and it comes back and lands. How cool is that? You guys should come over and play with it. You'll love it. So... You'll be one of eight teams to compete in the world championship, right? When is that? April? Didn't we have another middle school in Lancaster? Make it to the finals?
Not in FLL. In VAX, maybe?
That was a different one?
VAX, FRC, FTC, they've all done it, but FLL and middle school.
Okay. Well, I want you to know. Because, trust me, five years from now, you better know robotics if you want a job. So, who's the team leader? You guys need to have a campaign. You need a campaign manager? Okay, there you go. What's your name? Nice to meet you. Where's your teacher?
Cameron, Cameron! Cameron!
There he is, come on. Okay. All right. So, did you raise the money to get there yet?
Almost.
How much more do you need?
Five thousand dollars.
Five thousand? You're supposed to go compete, not go to a party.
Airplanes aren't cheap.
You're gonna fly?
He's walking.
Okay, I'm really proud of you. I'll give you the five grand. So, you got your money. Joey, you're in the way. Joe, behind you.
You got it.
Okay, let's let the parents come down. You guys wanna get in the picture? Come on down. You guys should really be proud of this. This is so cool.
Joe, get the parents down. Once, or twice. Hey, they'd be in the shop, dude.
You need to clarify that was your personal money.
I don't care.
The people at home might...
Oh. You clarify.
Just a point of clarification. When he gave him the $5,000, it was his personal money, not the city's money, so...
I'd have waited for the letter to the editor, you know? Okay. Moving on. City Manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
Have we approved the minutes yet?
No.
We gotta get through the successor agency, okay. S.A.N.B. one, any speaker cards?
No speaker cards.
Let's waive the staff report. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous, passes. Council action. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Let's vote. It's approved unanimously. Consent calendar. What do I gotta pull?
You have to pull CC3, and you have a conflict with CC7.
Okay, with those two items pulled, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent calendar, it is currently comprised pulling CC3 and CC7.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. All right, I'm going to...
No, do these first.
This is for three.
Three is good.
Okay. Christopher Clark. Should we do a staff report first?
What'd you guys mean by "pull"?
If people are gonna speak on an item, or if one of us have a conflict and can't vote on an item, we take it off the consent calendar. And then we... And that's why I called you up to speak on CC3.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay, good.
Thank you, sweetie.
Yeah.
I do not believe that marijuana is a dangerous drug. I believe that it's a plant that's been here since 5,000 B.C., and it was put on the Schedule I list in 1937. And there's a lot of things going on in this country that had to do with why it was put on there, not just the actual research of the plant to determine that it was dangerous. Out of everything on the Schedule I list, it is the only drug on there that is organic. It's not processed, a lot of chemicals put together to make it. It's also the only thing on there with zero overdoses. And it's also the only thing on there that has the same properties in it that we do in our bodies. Up the road in Roseman, I own a dispensary along with, you know, like 12 other shops. I hate that, you know? But the lack of regulations is the reason why there's so many shops, so we need more regulations, not banning it. But if I had to guess, there's about $200,000 to $250,000 a week that goes up to Roseman. And a lot of people are from Lancaster, the majority are Lancaster and Palmdale. And the majority of that are working-class citizens from age 25 on up. And these people get the medicine and just go to their homes. Now, I haven't seen in the newspaper headlines that say Roseman is, you know, the drug capital of the AV, or there's crime, or anything that would be deterrent. And I think those same things would happen here if we were to allow recreation. Now, the state of California passed it, and the people in California would like it. And I feel that if we were to pass on it, it would be like getting a stock tip, but waiting for the market to get good before you use it. It doesn't work that way. You have to get in now to stay current with what's going on around the world. Now, in California, it just so happens that the highest quality of marijuana is grown here. Not in any other country, not in Colorado, but right here in California. And I view that as a gift. A gift that's been given to us, that we have a chance to give out to the world. Now, with something like that, that's not harmful, I feel that we should take advantage of it. And you just said yourself, sir, you know, it's a city of innovation. I would just like the people there in this industry to show you guys, show the city, what we can do with something that is legal. And so, I just urge you to, you know, give us a chance. Give people that live here in Lancaster a chance. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Michael Reeves.
Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I believe that all marijuana is harmful because of the side effects it presents. I believe that marijuana that is classified medical marijuana is even more harmful. Thinking that smoking marijuana and getting a high is a solution to a serious medical problem, a patient may not... May choose not to visit a doctor and receive medicine that will alleviate hardcore pain. I think persons smoking marijuana, for whatever reason, should be penalized also.
Thank you. Leslie Aguayo? Aguayo. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Leslie Aguayo. I'm a health educator and outreach worker here in Lancaster. I'm a graduate from the University of California, Irvine, with two degrees in anthropology and urban studies, and a prospective student to the Masters of City Planning Program at UC Berkeley. As most of us know, the racialization of drug policy in this country is not a novel concept, nor is it one which finds itself on the brink of eradication. A concern that has yet to be addressed is the potential increase of discrepancies between black and white teen arrests from marijuana. I have written a report on how Prop 64 will affect communities of color, if you'd like to take a look.
How will what?
How Prop 64 will affect communities of color. So, a data analysis from the Office of Disease Prevention and Health Promotion found that black, white, and Latino adolescents use marijuana at around the same rate. According to the Colorado Department of Public Safety, they have indicated that juvenile arrest rates for white adolescents decreased by 8% after marijuana was legalized. However, black and Hispanic, Latino, and African-Americans' arrest rates increased by 29% and 58%, respectively. One could argue that perhaps these arrest rates won't apply to a city that will outlaw marijuana businesses to all residents regardless of race. But in fact, it may further catalyze the problem if people are more inclined to enter the illegal market, as there is no means to enter the legalized market in this city. Which brings me to question, who can enter the marijuana industry? Under Section 26057 of Prop 64, a commercial marijuana license may not be given to an applicant who has previously been convicted of a felony. Prior to Prop 64 passing, possession or selling marijuana would have been grounds for a felony. And since blacks are four times more likely to have been the victims of these arrests, a greater percentage of blacks and Latinos are ineligible to enter the legal marijuana industry. A felony conviction is also grounds for denial of employment, ineligibility to participate in any federal healthcare program, retirement benefits, welfare, social security, disability, and college financial aid, as well as public housing. So, it stands to reason that many ex-felons would consider entering the drug industry just to make a living. As Keith Humphries from Stanford University states, "The emerging legal marijuana industry is overwhelmingly white-owned and white-dominated, and provides good access to white customers." So, one possibility is that that leaves the illegal market disproportionately composed of people of color, both the buyers and the sellers. As a city, we must make strides in the equity of all communities. While I do not think that the complete legalization of the marijuana market is best for public safety or public health, I also don't think complete prohibition of marijuana businesses will improve arrest rates for underrepresented youth or the stigmatization of communities of color. And in that case, what have we gained from the opportunity that is Prop 64? Thank you.
Hold on. So...
Shaken.
I'm sorry.
I'm just really... I'm getting a little worried about public speaking.
I know. First time I was up here and had to do the Pledge of Allegiance, my voice cracked.
Yeah, I can feel it.
Really embarrassing.
My heart beat.
So... The idea being that if you eliminate people with felonies on their record, there's a civil rights effect, right?
Well, the idea is that I think it's important to consider that the disproportionate arrest rates are more inclined to people of colors. That would mean that if you cannot access a marijuana license, and you were four times more likely, by being black, to have had a felony conviction, then there's no... A lot of room for you to enter the legal marijuana industry, which would mean that even if we did regulate marijuana in the city, we would have to hopefully find a way to include all community members and account for the fact that there are disproportionate arrest rates for people who are black and Latinos in this country.
And I guess we're not limiting it to crimes of moral turpitude.
I'm sorry?
If it's not limited to crimes of moral turpitude...
Right.
Where's the nexus, right?
Right, because, you know, if you have been arrested for drug possession before marijuana was legalized, then that would be kind of ironic, since you would need that experience to open a marijuana business.
Well, that's stretching it.
Right. Well, I mean, to have a productive marijuana business, you would think that you'd have some experience with it. But if you were previously arrested and have a felony on your record, then how would you enter the legal marijuana market?
So, why did you write this paper?
I wrote it mainly because there were things that were unquestioned by Prop 64. I did a lot of research. I work at Tarzina Treatment Centers as a health educator, and I think it's important to consider all communities that will be affected by Prop 64. And I, myself, hadn't been aware of how entering the legal marijuana industry would affect other community members.
Get a copy of it, I'd like to read it. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, why aren't you that smart?
'Cause I sit next to you.
It's called the halo effect. Fran.
Good evening, Mayor Paris, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, ladies and gentlemen, and staff. My name is Fran Sarahs-Sarris, and I'm for the legalization of medical marijuana only. I feel that it is necessary for some patients to have this, and it is a nerve. But the main thing... I did wanna say something as far as if a doctor... Are the doctors gonna be... Have any kind of regulatory system as to whom they're gonna give this to as far as, you know, the cards? as far as, you know, the card, the money on the card is going to be handed out? Or is a doctor going to have to give it to whoever he wants to?
Well, there's a few things in play here. Right now, the ordinance we're talking about is excluding everything but the cultivation of medical marijuana. That's already been passed, okay? This excludes everything else. But in answer to your question, you know, there's a lot of controversy about doctors giving these cards out randomly and without too much oversight. But I don't know how that's any different than doctors giving out prescriptions without any oversight.
Well, that's true.
You know? I guess the only difference is, is the term of the prescription is not limited, but still the, it seems to me that the regulatory authority should be the Board of Medical Quality Assurance on doctors that violate those laws. But anyway, what we have before us now is eliminating everything but the commercial cultivation of medical-grade marijuana. Although I'm a little concerned about the tax ramifications of this, and I don't know that we've fully looked at it, if it cuts us off of state, our share of the state revenue.
Yeah, Mark wanted to answer that one.
We're still, there is a portion of that that's true. We're still researching the full thing.
And I'm wondering if we could just hold this in abeyance until we know the actual cost. Anybody have any disagreement with that? So can we just take it off the agenda until we know the answer to that?
I would recommend that the motion be to continue it to a date certain.
Okay.
Perhaps a month to give the time.
All right, I'll move to continue it. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. All opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Fran.
Okay, and now I'm going to leave in regards to CC7 because my wife owns some, no, I own some property there.
We have no speaker cards?
I'd like to put my name on the deed.
I need a motion and second for CC7.
I'll move to approve CC7.
Second that.
We have a motion and a second, let's vote. We have four yes votes with Mayor Perez recusing himself. Turn the meeting back over to Mayor Perez.
Oh, so I can recuse myself in the next one along with Ken Mann.
Correct.
Just letting you get the exercise.
So, new business one, let the record reflect that. I'm recusing myself because I own property in the vicinity.
And Mayor Perez recused himself and left the dais for the same reason.
Okay, Mark, who's doing the staff report?
That would be Ms. Dow.
Shannon.
Good evening, Vice Mayor Chris, council members, commissioners. We're pleased to be here tonight, thank you. We're pleased to be here tonight to present an update on the Lancaster Health District Initiative, formerly known as Medical Main Street. So we have a beautiful presentation for you that David Sargent will be delivering. In the interim, since we last visited with you, we have conducted extensive stakeholder outreach meetings with everyone from the fire and sheriff's departments to see how this impacts them, as well as health groups, nonprofits, and other organizations that were interested in the process. We've also been collaborating heavily with Antelope Valley Hospital and their new management to move this project forward. We'd like to thank Commissioner Vos and his entire team for examining this in depth at the planning commission level. And tonight, what we're looking for from you is your approval of the general concepts that are presented here. So once we achieve that, we will be proceeding with the EIR that will enable us to move forward with development on the project. With that, I'll turn it over to David Sargent with Sergeant Townplanning.
Thank you, Shannon. Good evening, Vice Mayor Chris and members of the council. We've been working with your staff, and as Shannon said, a lot of stakeholders who own property in and around the district over the last, most of a year, to develop a series of concepts, which we'll go through for you quickly here. At the highest level, the objectives of the Health District are to promote higher-quality community health for Lancaster and the valley, to support the growth and success of the existing cluster of healthcare businesses anchored by Antelope Valley Hospital at 15th and J., and to recruit and organize new investment in a mixed, a high-quality, high-value, walkable, transit-served, mixed-use district organized around the hospital and focused on health. The location, as you can see, is the area basically around 15th West between K. and J. It's really the geographic center of your city. It's very close to your downtown Boulevard District. We hope to promote connectivity between those two important hubs and the surrounding transit-oriented development area by the MetroLink station. It's got very good freeway visibility and access. The design of the upgraded interchange at K. and 15th West is underway. Got existing freeway access at 20th and proposed upgrades at J. as well. And perhaps most interestingly, you've got about a half-mile of frontage along the freeway there that can be reimagined, that can provide a new image of Lancaster. You've got basically a blank canvas there that this district can write on in terms of improving and clarifying the image of Lancaster for people that are coming through. The framework for the district is already there, obviously, in the forms of avenues of 15th and 20th West and Avenue J. and J. 8. Essentially, the property is organized into three superblocks, very large blocks. This is a half-mile by a half-mile. And the strategies for the district have a lot to do with making it, bringing to it a lot of the values and character that you have in your downtown, which is so successful, making it a place that people want to be, a place that people want to invest. So connecting the existing facilities to one another with new local through streets so that people can move comfortably through the district without having to jump out onto the big arterial streets. Connectors, and then organizing a development pattern which would be set up flexibly but to deliver predictably, blocks of a size that are compatible with a walkable, bikeable environment, again, similar to your downtown. To generate each of these areas is a quarter-mile in diameter, so basically, a very walkable area within each of these precincts and with a high-quality, high-frequency transit hub at the center that we've been discussing with AVTA to provide very high-quality transit access. So basically, you're taking an area where you've got a lot of very valuable facilities surrounded by a lot of empty land and repositioning this land so that instead of its address being the field behind Home Depot, it's, you know, the intersection of 17th West and Avenue J. 3, essentially extending the public realm through there to create high-quality addresses for new development, whether it's housing, medical office. And the zoning that we would propose to prepare for this is going to provide a lot of flexibility as to the use and the intensity of those developments while ensuring that they're of a very high quality, that complement one another and add to the value of the area as a whole. And building, making space, right now, the women's and infants wing of the hospital and the main hospital are separated by a parking lot. So just for instance, joining them with this sort of a mall space that you would find in many campuses around the country that would provide spaces for outdoor activity, healthy activities, employees to have lunch, et cetera. Doing complete streets improvements, your staff has been working on a complete street strategy for the city as a whole. This is Avenue J., just north of the hospital, and looking at ways to make it a more complete street with bike lanes and a high-quality address for a potential future new hospital facility as they upgrade their existing facilities. One of the things that we heard the most when we met with the hospital employees was that they would very much value a place they could walk to lunch or coffee or to meet their friends, basically somewhere they can get to out of the hospital on their little time off for lunch. So we've identified this as a very important hub with a future medical office and then commercial and probably some housing as well, and very beautiful bus stops that would provide comfortable places for people to wait. The percentage of the patients and the customers of this facility that would benefit from transit access is very high. So we see that as quite a priority. This is an illustration we just did of how then if this becomes that major transit center, this corner of the parking lot could have a small plaza made at the corner that would provide a place. Already, the employees have certain days of the week that food trucks come to the place to offer them another option for lunch. So this would be a place that could be designed for public outreach and community events to help the hospital project its image into the community and promote health. Essentially, to make the streetscapes down here a lot more like the Boulevard and a lot less like the big parking lots that they are now. And all of the streets through this development area would be complete streets that promote walking and biking. This is, and this is an example we've drawn of, this is currently J. 8 with the apartments on the north side and a lot of vacant land in the south. The owners of the vacant land in the south are very interested in the possibility of developing it, either as good-quality housing and/or medical office space. So if the city commits to this sort of a change to the street, that could be funded, obviously, by developer fees as well as some money the city already has, then if you're trying to get people to bring good-quality development, and you're offering them an address on that street, they're not going to get too excited. If you're offering them an address on that street, it's a different proposition, which we've all learned together through watching what happened on the Boulevard after that was changed. So the zoning and development standards would, and design guidelines, would promote high-quality office buildings, good-quality commercial restaurant and restaurant facilities to serve the population. At least one hotel, we think, would be a very valuable addition that would provide a location for visiting professionals to stay and people who come to visit their loved one in the hospital. Very strong opportunities for assisted living and continuum of care and senior housing around the hospital. There's a premium value for developments of that type in proximity to a hospital. And then housing of various types that, there's a number of the property owners who own property right next to the hospital are very interested in the possibility of providing good-quality housing that would be attractive to the professionals who work at the hospital every day. There's a very high percentage of commute in from pretty far away that could be, it could really, it would be a valuable recruiting tool, we believe, to be able to offer choices of living close to work. And we've done, just, the zoning would be very flexible that would allow quite a bit, that would allow developers to choose whether a particular lot was medical office or housing. But just sort of as a general thing, we've drawn the blue there as the medical campus, the orange as medical office, the little red pieces probably as some retail services, and then the yellow would probably fill in with housing. And there's a couple sites in particular that we think would be good to prioritize for hotel. Probably, you might very well not get two, but it'd be good to prioritize those sites for that use, which we think would be a really great addition to the district. And this is the last slide. These are the quantities of development that, the extensive market analysis that HRNA, the economic firm that is on our team, have developed. And we would expect to write a plan and prepare an environmental impact report that would enable at least those amounts. We're going to do a little sensitivity analysis, and we'll probably recommend that it be entitled for a bit more than that to make sure you don't limit your upside. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions you have. Questions?
I just have a quick question. Considering the amount of money that's been spent on Lancaster Boulevard, I'm wondering, how is it that you're going to promote Lancaster Boulevard along with Avenue I with this new area?
I think that the functions would be, we think that the functions would be very different. This would be very much an employment center that would have, that would have small amounts of commercial and restaurant amenities to serve mainly the populations that are there. We're certainly not thinking of this being something that would compete with the Boulevard in any way. In fact, one of the things that we're looking at very carefully with AVTA is making very high-quality transit available between, whether it's the new electric buses that are coming or whether it's some other smaller sort of a shuttle vehicle, so that people working in this employment district would have the practical option of going to the Boulevard for lunch. We're not, we're absolutely not thinking about trying to duplicate that over here or take away from its success in any way.
Well, I wasn't necessarily thinking of it in that particular way either. What I am thinking is that if, to do something of this magnitude, there's the great possibility here of doing a joint campaigning of the things that are going on...
Oh, yes.
...in that particular area so that we could increase business both there and on the Boulevard and along Avenue I as well.
Absolutely. And that's why we're, in all of the work we've been doing on this, we're looking at it very much as a city center, looking at all of those pieces as elements of a larger city center plan.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
To hitchhike on that, the marketing for the Medical Main Street area, Health and Wellness area, will be primarily focused on existing raw land, new development coming in, and we have quite an opportunity. How many cities do you know of our size in Los Angeles County that have 100 acres that are vacant around a major medical institution? But Avenue Y. is a good example. That's the main corridor to get to downtown. And so I think David has helped us realize that we really need to think about these things holistically, the initial map that he showed, how close the center city is together, the densities that are going to be created, and so exactly what you're proposing is what will...
Fantastic. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Rush?
Actually, what's the timeframe we're looking at, as far as you like, moving forward from there?
We have approximately a year to complete, before completion of the planning process, which includes the EIR, which will be a very in-depth study. And following that, this is designed to establish framework. We've done the market analysis out through 2036, and that's what's demonstrated here as far as the demand that they're expecting during that time. So this is designed to be flexible enough to allow for development throughout that time period.
Okay, thank you. It's a great project.
Vern, you want to talk about the grants? Have we received grants?
Actually, Shannon's our expert.
Okay.
Yes, our Public Works Department has secured metro grants between $5 and $6 million for this project. And with the city's match, we'll have a total of approximately $14 to $15 million that's already dedicated, already programmed for fiscal year 1920 to begin putting this infrastructure in the ground.
So that's putting all the new streets in...
Yes.
...and creating all the new areas. In the middle of that, there's a school. What are we doing to mitigate the school?
Oh, the Sunnydale Elementary School. We're not thinking that, well, the traffic there at the school is very cyclical, and so we don't think the traffic that would be generated, this would be much of an overlap. The, in terms of land use, we're, we'll be recommending that the uses across the street from the school would be primarily residential rather than commercial or institutional.
If you're going to go from a four-lane highway to a two-lane highway, let's say on J. 8 and 10th Street, because they use that as a shortcut across there, what are we going to do to mitigate the traffic there?
Oh, I think on J. 8, we've done, and we're going to, we're going to do a lot more very careful analysis. We've already analyzed J., though, and, J. 8, excuse me. And it's our, it's our initial projections that the traffic volumes on J. 8 will work fine at that configuration. There's a dichotomy that's sometimes confusing between speed and capacity, and we're certainly not talking about slowing it down like the Boulevard. But with that kind of a three-liner with the left-turn possibilities and the capacity is quite high with steady-flowing traffic, there's going to be, there's always going to be short-term congestion around a school morning and evening. There's just, you know, that's just the nature of schools. But in the larger picture, we're confident that the capacity there is sufficient, and we're going to check it, and we're going to do a whole traffic study and environmental impact report. And if it's not sufficient, then we'll have a different design.
Okay. Okay. Jill, do you have anything?
Other than to congratulate the team on their efforts so far, I mean, this has really been a great start. Look forward to the results, and the public hearings will hold on the environmental impact report in about eight months.
Absolutely.
Very good.
Thank you.
And we would be remiss as well not to mention Councilmember Raj Malley and his role in this. He's been our council liaison throughout the process and a true champion for the project. So thank you, Raj, for that.
It's been a pleasure.
Okay, we have a couple speaker cards. Fran?
Well, I'm actually happy to hear that everything I was going to bring up is already being done. Because I was going to say, because in the past, I haven't heard Lancaster and the Antelope Valley Hospital getting together to put this, I know the properties around there, but it hasn't been said until, that's one of the things I was going to bring up, and I'm glad to hear it. And I think it is going to be a good program. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Fran. Michael Reeves.
Vice Mayor Chris, Council staff, ladies and gentlemen. I've been a regular attendee of meetings at AV Hospital for several years. I've been a candidate for the Board of Directors three times. I've regularly spoken with and advised the management for free. I have no financial interest in the healthcare district. I believe the city for now should do the following. One, return to the original concept of developing the 85 acres near the hospital campus. Two, appoint a commission of board to oversee the project. It would have seven members to begin with, a planning officer, an attorney, a hospital administrator, accountant, a representative of Lancaster, a representative of Palmdale, and one member of the general public who would act as chair. Three, immediately begin hearings on the project to get public comments and concerns. I believe the project for now should remain under the Antelope Valley Healthcare District because, one, the healthcare district is in a precarious position financially and internally. The bonds issued by the hospital are rated by Moody's Rating Service as B as in boy, small A, three. That's almost as low as you can get. The rating outlook is negative. Anything that can boost the perception of the healthcare district is beneficial to the hospital and to us. I have previously stated that I believe that Medical Main Street is the salvation of our city. We need to make it an Antelope Valley thing like other things are in Lancaster. Antelope Valley Hospital, AVTA, Antelope Valley Courthouses, Antelope Valley Fairgrounds, and so on. Lancaster will be the primary beneficiary because of the location of Medical Main Street, but we want to make it an AV experience with all the Valley's support. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Any discussion? I need a motion and second to approve NB one.
I move that we approve. NB one is proposed.
Second that.
We have a motion and second. Let's vote. Motion passes three with, three yes votes with Mayor Paris and Ken Man recusing themselves. Did you miss us?
Oh, this is why you're all here. Okay. All right, let's hear the report on CPH one.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, the public hearing was previously opened.
I'm sorry, what?
I was reminding you that the public hearing was previously opened and continued to today's date.
Okay.
Mayor Paris, members of the City Council, the item that is before you is an appeal of the Planning Commission action on two conditional use permits that are proposed for commercial solar facilities. That is, conditional use permit 1602 and conditional use permit 1607. They occupy adjacent sites, 1602, as you can see here, and 1607, as you can see, located to the west of that site. Total capacity, the projects themselves, total 484 acres. Total capacity that is proposed is 65 megawatts. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on these two cases that actually covered two of their meetings, their regular December meeting and their meeting in January. The Commission at that time received and reviewed a lot of testimony, both written and oral comments. And that testimony included both proponents of the project and opponents. The Commission had a lot of things to review and a lot of things to consider in looking at that. I'm not going to go through everything that they reviewed because I believe you will hear a lot of that in testimony this evening also, but I do want to go over several key issues that they discussed at length. Probably the largest one being the issue of dust and related valley fever issues that would be associated with the proposed projects. And it's important to understand that when we look at environmental impacts and effects of projects, we are really looking at two types of effects. One is construction-related, generally short-term. The other is long-term, basically those types of things that occur with the operation of the project. And in this discussion that the Planning Commission had, they really were focusing a lot on what you would call this northeast corner of CUP 1602. That was an area raised certainly by a number of the residents in the area. It was also raised by the representative of the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District, Mr. Banks, who was present at the January meeting. And in his, in his testimony, which is very important to relay to you, the Planning Commission heard that in general, the representative of the AVA QMD felt that the majority of the sites could be developed and managed without too much problem. But the exception to that was looking at this northeast corner. And in that particular case, the Planning Commission did ask if the AVA QMD representative felt that this project could be successfully developed and the dust managed off of that site. Now, this is a site that's had a lot of history, a site that has had problems in the past. And Mr. Banks noted that in his testimony. He said it is a challenging site. He said it is a place that will require a lot of coordination between the applicant, the AVA QMD, the city, and other organizations that are involved with the issue of dust. He noted that in this particular area of the project, there's a need to avoid mass grading and instead make sure that the work is done in phases. That is something that we typically are seeing in our solar projects. S Power, who is the applicant in this case, has a good history of working with the city on these issues. Mr. Banks' comment was that he felt this could be successfully done. And in the long term, he felt that once the project is completed and proper mitigation measures are applied to the long-term stabilization of the site, that can actually result in a good long-term improvement for that area. Control of dust and particularly related to valley fever issues is the important factor in terms of reducing the potential for valley fever occurrence. And that was noted in testimony that was provided in a letter form, actually by opponents of the project from the Los Angeles County Department of Public Works, who said the key to controlling valley fever issues is controlling the dust from those sites. Now, you're going to hear a lot more about that, but I do want to touch on a couple of other issues that the Commission also heard testimony on. One was increased traffic related particularly to construction because that is when the traffic is generated in solar projects. Operationally, there is very little traffic generated by these. The applicant, S Power's representative, indicated at the meeting that their solution to this is to restrict construction traffic to use only Avenue G, which as you can see is on the south end of 1602, and also would provide access through to 1607, and making sure that that construction traffic does not use Avenue F, which goes through the community as you can see on the aerial. In the, in the appeal that was filed, biological issues were also raised as a concern. And I think it's important to note that the city does require a number of factors to reduce those impacts. Number one, if a listed species is found on a site, the applicant is required to mitigate for that in accordance with the requirements of the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. We also have protocols that are in place, not only on solar projects but on any construction project in our city that requires pre-construction surveys to ensure that if there are nesting birds, other species that have located on the site, that proper protocols are put in place to deal with those issues. S Power has in fact, in the case of burrowing owls, had a project that did have burrowing owls on their site, and they were successful in managing that particular construction project, meeting the protocols of the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. And it is important to make sure that the applicant themselves is as, is as involved and as committed to this as the city itself is. The city also requires, and would also require on these projects, should they be approved and constructed, that the applicant pay a per-acre biological mitigation fee. Now, the city has charged this since 2005, and the reason that we started collecting it was to deal with what's known as cumulative effect of projects. That fee, in addition to fees that we have received actually from jurisdictions other than our own, has allowed the city to fund the acquisition and long-term management of over 600 acres of mitigation property within the Antelope Valley. Most recently, part of that funding was used, as you may recall, to fund part of the acquisition of the 21-acre site that's north of the current Prime Desert Woodland Natural Park. Finally, there was a concern raised about noise. Once again, noise is primarily a construction-related impact in terms of solar projects. Projects that are solar are required to meet the same restriction, restrictions on hours of operation, essentially Monday through Saturday daytime hours only that any other construction project would meet. Upon hearing all of this testimony and considering it and asking a lot of questions, I will say the Commission took quite a bit of time on this. The Commission did vote six to one to approve both projects. They were subsequently appealed. You have a lot of information that is in front of you attached to your staff report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, but I know you have a lot of testimony to consider this evening.
Any questions?
I have, I have a few.
Yes.
So you hadn't mentioned controlling the dust as that relates to valley fever?
Yes.
So what are we, what are we doing to combat that problem?
There are a number of things that, that they are looking at doing from the air quality management standpoint as well as the city of Lancaster. I think the most important one is to make sure that particularly this northeast corner of this site that you're seeing here is only graded in very small portions. Construction can only occur in small chunks because it is mass grading that has been the most problematic situation for solar projects. And I'm sure residents in that area can relay a lot of stories to you about that. The other thing that was brought up by Mr. Banks as part of this is to ensure that there is birmingham, mulching, and other kinds of, other kinds of placement of materials in place that help to keep the dust down, trap it, to make sure that to the extent possible it does not leave the site. The final thing that he mentioned in the discussion was the possibility, long-term, of a cover crop on the site. Apparently, that was done several years ago, but then it was grazed off by sheep, sheep grazing. And he said that the cover crop, once in place, tended to work pretty well, but once it was grazed off, the site once again had situations that were, were not as conducive to controlling dust. And that, of course, is in its current state right now as it is.
Okay. You had also mentioned biological issues such as species and nesting birds. Are there any other issues that have arisen that you, that you're aware of?
I believe that one of the people who testified at the, at the Planning Commission hearing noted that there may be a den for a kit fox on the site. Kit foxes in and of themselves are not a protected species, however, fur-bearing mammals are. So if there is in fact an inhabited den on the site, there are protocols that require that construction remain away from them for a certain period of time. If that den contains any kind of pups or anything of that type, once again, fish and wildlife demands that certain kinds of approaches are put in place to ensure that those can grow and then leave the site at an appropriate time. That's kind of also the same way, by the way, that they deal with the burrowing owl issue. You just have to avoid until the young have fledged and left.
My last question here is, you mentioned a biological mitigation fee.
Yes.
What is, what is the fee amount and how, and when would that be applied?
The fee amount is $770 per acre. That is the fee that was established back in 2005, and it was based upon what was expected to be collected as part of the West Mojave Coordinated Management Plan, which at that time was under consideration by a number of agencies in the Western Mojave Desert. That plan was never adopted, but the city actually adopted the fee and in fact has used that as the, the approach to acquire mitigation land within this general area. The fee is applied at the time the building permit is issued or a grading permit is issued for the site.
Is it a one-time-only fee?
It is a one-time-only fee. However, when the city looks at acquiring mitigation land, it looks at two basic things. Number one, it wants to get the most acreage for the least amount. And we also make sure that we look in areas where other conservation organizations are in the process of acquiring or have already acquired properties so that we maximize the amount of connected mitigation land that exists. And we also require that that conservation agency, we've worked with several in the city area, that they have in place long-term management protocols, and the cost always includes funding that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, if I could ask a question, Brian. You, you made a reference several times about small chunks graded at a time. So define small chunks.
That would have to be defined a little more fully by the, the Air Quality Management District. I understand that they have been in conversations with S Power's representatives and have had some discussion about declaring the site as a complex site. And I believe what that does is that does, number one, it gives additional funding that has to come from the project applicant to the AVA QMD. AVA QMD uses that money to ensure that they are out on the site frequently, looking at what is happening and making sure that if there is an issue during construction, they can begin to manage it soon, sooner rather than later.
So, so maybe this is a question of breadth then, to define small chunks. I mean, I've got pictures here.
I think it's five acres.
Is that what it is? Yeah, because I, we have pictures here, obviously, that shows dust in the picture. So obviously, common sense says if it was good enough to, from a distance, to be able to get it on a picture, then obviously we had some problems there. So the question that comes to mind is to avoid that, especially when we talk about valley fever, you know, the residual effects. So then we would permit it or it would be permitted in increments so that if, if somebody was to, whatever Marvin said, five acres, all of a sudden now we do five acres and somebody starts having a problem. So what do we do? Do we go to two and a half?
That may be one of the solutions. I think that's the, the importance of what Mr. Banks noted to the Planning Commission, that it has to be a constant and very well-coordinated effort between AVA QMD, the city, and the applicant, as well as any other organizations that may have knowledge about the way to control that dust. He indicated, and, and to state what he said was that it will be a challenging site, but he believes it can be successfully done. And if I'm misstating him, I'm sure he'll tell you.
Brian, my understanding is that the county is also involved in this because Brian, my understanding is that the county is also involved in this because historically, as Ken would say, this has always been a problem piece of property, and the grazing of the sheep have been a problem in that area because they were pulling it up and sheep footing is that. Did you address that?
As far as prohibiting grazing or just...
Yes.
Okay. The city, at this point, does not have a restriction on grazing of it. However, it was noted during the conversation that, obviously, if S-Power were to move ahead with this project, assuming it were to be approved, they would fence the property, which would actually be one of the initial controls on making sure that you don't... Sheep grazing, as you know, tends to just move across property. And one of the problems that was in place when the cover crop was originally done on this site several years ago was that those physical controls were not in place, and it was simply grazed off.
But that was the problem, is that I think one of the farmers used to own it. They planted barley on the property. The sheep came in, ate it all, and created a massive problem over there.
That is my understanding from people who know the site better than I do, actually.
Anyone else?
Can we hear from Bretton?
In a moment. What kind of testing do we have as to what's actually in the ground? Meaning, what kind of microorganisms are in the ground that could be potentially harmful to the citizens?
The city, at this point, does not have a testing protocol. The letter from the Los Angeles County Public Health Department noted that they did not feel that was necessarily an effective approach. Once again...
Why not?
I can't remember exactly what the information was in the letter, but they felt that simply testing the soil did not necessarily identify everything that might be there. And once again, they fell back more on the issue of controlling the dust itself rather than trying to identify specifically whether there might be organism or not. They, in their letter, seemed to make the assumption that you should consider every piece of property to potentially contain the valley fever spores.
Well, then, why don't we pack up and go home? I mean, why build anything? That isn't quite... I meant that rhetorically. But back to the issue, we have the... I was surprised. We have the highest mortality rate from COPD in the county. I mean, we've got people dying. It's... And it's a horrible way to die. And I'm the mayor, and I haven't seen any education as to what to do about it, how to spot it, what I could do to prevent it. None of that is available. And I'm thinking we're being remiss in regards to that. Where's Bret? I know you love to talk to me here so much. Do we have any monies available? I mean, I understand there's a new administration, but is there any monies available to deal with the COPD in this community?
Not really. If you're looking at just the asthma rates and COPD and things like that, there really aren't. Not grants that I'm aware of. Maybe through health organizations or something, but not through the California Resources.
I want the staff to contact the National Jewish Hospital in Denver. I want to know if there's a protocol that they have where they can come out and look at our problem and make recommendations as to what we could do, and I want a cost estimate on that. And Garrett, I want you to help pay for it. Fair enough? I mean, I want to know the extent of this problem and what do we got to do to save some lives here? Because I mean, the county is just saying, "Really?" I mean, the one-liners I can come up with for that. And I want a target date. Ninety days?
That should be more than sufficient. There's also... Kevin McCarthy has also funded an institute, I think it's out of Kern County, that looks at valley fever.
I'm less concerned about valley fever than I am, you know, MAC is a problem. There's all kinds of lung problems up here that are going undiagnosed. Everybody gets a valley fever test, but all the other stuff isn't. And I suspect that's the reason we're having the MAC problem, I mean, the COPD problem. But I want to find out. I want us to drill in on it and find out what's going on with it. Where does Power go? Are you hiding?
No.
You good with this?
Yes.
Okay. I want you to meet with S-Power and the others and figure out a way that first find out from the hospital what it's going to take, and then let's figure out how we fund it, and then we'll go from there. You're going to supervise this project, I take it?
We don't have discretionary authority on this. This is the city's, right? They're the land use agency.
I've got all kinds of discretion.
We will be involved. Yes, sir.
All right. Good. Thank you.
Can I point out one thing before I step down? And Mr. Ludiki brought up, they talked about grading, and what we try to do when we approve a dust control plan is avoid grading and mowing the natural vegetation. So I wanted to make sure that that was clear.
I thought we were building these now without touching the natural vegetation. Is that right?
Yes, in general, we are doing that. However, if you look at that particular portion of the site, it is a little more uneven, and I don't know that you can actually deal with that.
Okay. IBWs here, right?
Without some...
Can you help us with the health study to your workers?
Yeah.
I mean, I think we're being blind to a problem, or at least the possibility of it. Let's find out, you know, before we start picking up the bodies, all right?
Mayor, one other question. I appreciate the direction that you gave. These pictures obviously show dust and whether or not they're reflective of land that's going to be used or was used for solar. The question is, if that wasn't graded, maybe it's just in general, we just got a problem, period. Do you understand?
Well, we've always had a dust problem.
Right.
I get that. But I also get that we're compounding it, and I want to figure out how to avoid that. And are we still letting the sheep create the dust problem?
There's a letter from the Air District to the county not to grant grazing permits because, as Brian said, it's really not a jurisdictional issue. Sheep and their herders graze, and they just keep moving. So we expressed that to the county. I think the Air District did it two months ago.
I mean, we can't pass an ordinance, say, keep your sheep in the county?
Mayor, may I interrupt you, Mayor?
Yes.
At our previous two Planning Commission hearings, the commission brought up the issue, and we're studying the existing regulations in the city relative to grazing on residential and agricultural land, and we're expecting to bring a recommendation back to the city council to, in effect, prohibit it entirely on city property, city jurisdiction, not city ownership, but city jurisdiction, other than for folks who own the property and for their hobby farms and that sort of thing.
But I want to two-step it. I first want to find out just how serious the problem is, and then can we seasonally do it? I mean, is there a time when we're not going to have dust, you know?
Probably not going to have much dust now since...
The rain.
Since the grass is now growing and... However, but if it's springtime and if you let the sheep herders come in, it's going to exacerbate the problem all over again.
All right. Let's recognize what we're doing is within a year, we have a program where we've done something about the COPD problem in the Antelope Valley that we haven't waited for the county to do it, and we haven't waited for public health, and that we're proactively involved in this, okay? Because I want everybody nice and healthy when the power plant opens up. I couldn't help it. All right. Anything else? Okay. Jacqueline Air.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jacqueline Air. I'm here on behalf of Save Our Rural Town. I am an air pollution control specialist. I am certified by the South Coast Air Quality Management District as a certified permitting professional, and I focus on air pollution control and mitigation. I want to point out a few things before I talk about what I was going to say. I want to reply to some of the comments that were made. I think there's a misunderstanding here. The AVA-QMD is not issuing a permit for this project. They have no nexus and no ability to impose the berm conditions, the restriction conditions that you all just discussed. All of that has to be imposed by the CUP and on the CUP, because if it is not, those mitigations do not exist in fact or in law, and S-Power has absolutely no obligation to comply with them. All AVA-QMD does is a dust plant. If you look at the dust control plans, none of those provisions can be imposed on them. They can only be imposed by the City of Lancaster as the lead agency. Now, earlier today, I sent you several pictures, and I don't know if those are the pictures you're referring to, but I can tell you those pictures were taken during grading on this S-Power Project 14-10 up there on 90th and Avenue L. And they were taken during September, on September 1, which is a time period in your FEIR that established that enhanced mitigation measures would be imposed. So you can see the water trucks. All those mitigation measures were imposed, and we still had substantial dust emissions. So they... You have clear evidence, even imposing every possible mitigation measure that's imposed does not control the dust limits. At any rate, as set forth in detail in the second letter I submitted regarding the CUPs, S-Power has shown that they often do not comply with the conditions that the City of Lancaster has imposed on prior solar farm projects. For example, they often grade in areas where grading is explicitly prohibited. They fail to maintain and even install landscaping where required, and their construction activities generate significant levels of particulate emissions, as the photographs that I submitted demonstrate. S-Power is able to do these things because the City of Lancaster has not enforced the CUP requirements as a condition of use, even though such enforcement is mandated under SEQA.
Hold up. Is that accurate?
I don't know the particular case she's referring to. Whenever we get a complaint or by observation inspection, we do go out there and we have shut it down and done some things. So I'm not exactly sure of the conditions. We can certainly look into the particular incidents.
I could elaborate. For example, none of the solar projects that have been approved to date have any landscaping. So those projects under SEQA, that condition is a condition of use.
I remember us talking about the landscaping two years ago. How come it's not...
Well, it's imposed as a condition, it's just not being enforced. And you should, under SEQA, since those are conditions of use, you need to disconnect the generation until the plant or the facility is brought into compliance, and only Lancaster can do that.
Well, I wouldn't do that anyway.
Well, I appreciate that, but it's still a condition.
But wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I mean, we can talk at each other. What I would like to do is find some movement towards the center with folks, okay?
I appreciate that.
I have found S-Power to be very cooperative with us, and they totally get that they're... I mean, I'm not above doing terrible things if somebody's not cooperating with us, especially when it's the health of the citizens, right? But I've never had to do that with them. If they're not complying, it's because there's a breakdown in communication. I don't think it's a breakdown in the corporate structure.
Okay.
You know, I mean, they plan on being around for a while. They plan on changing the way power is generated. You know, they... If things aren't going the way they're supposed to be, I'm more concerned about how do we fix that? And we've got the corporate officers here, and I'm assuming you're listening. So I want completion dates. When are we going to have the landscaping on projects that were, should have been already? And what are we going to do to make sure that that comes up, right? I want the health aspects of this done, and I also want it in regards to distance from housing. It may be you have to relocate people during construction if it's that dangerous, because we really don't know. We're just assuming it's okay for people to breathe dust, you know, that... I no longer believe that.
Thank you.
So we will deal with that issue. But at the same time, I don't want anybody getting too encouraged here. We are the alternative energy capital of the world, and I'm going to make certain that we stay that. And what I'm trying to do is, how do we do that without stepping on folks, okay? And the other thing I think we need to be looking at is, are we testing houses during construction to see if they're affected by the dust? You know, it's one thing to take a picture of dust five miles away. How much of this particulate matter is actually affecting the homeowner, and what do we do to mitigate that or to deal with it? We could do better. And I never really thought too much of it because I just thought, oh, well, it's dust. As long as it doesn't cause a car wreck, everything's fine. Now I get it's really not. This is serious stuff that we have to contend with. So I'd like to make that a priority for everybody and have a plan in place relatively quickly. And I would suggest that you work with the city staff on that. You seem to know what you're talking about, okay?
I appreciate... First of all, I really appreciate your sensitivity to this issue. I am very grateful, and quite frankly, it's refreshing.
Well, it's really not, because I understand, at the end of the day, you'd prefer not to look at these things.
Oh, well, I'm an environmental engineer. I'm very pro-renewable energy, so I understand that. But I also understand, coming from the air quality perspective, a permit condition is only as powerful as the lead agency chooses to make it. And so I'm seeking support or help or some way...
Okay, well, then let me make this clear to city staff. This is our priority. I want people safe as these things are built. Clear enough?
Yes, and I had one little other element I wanted to discuss, and that's the section to the right of... Well, the pictures are gone. To the northeast corner. The topography there, you have five-foot swales, you have incredible drops, and that topography does not lend itself to the type of construction that's proposed by the site plan approval, you know, with the panels all this way, because we have huge topography changes. That site is very sensitive. It was only just recently stabilized after years of dust and damage. I am urging you to please preserve the upper-right corner to be remained, to remain untouched and in perpetuity, and don't touch the sand burns, don't do anything. And I think that perhaps somebody from the AVA-QMD could explain further.
Is there a trade-off we can give you for that?
Well, we do need the land for projects that we're committed to.
I get that. I mean, is there something else nearby, or is there some... I mean...
There are other parcels around that area. We can look at it together, and I can sit down with Mark and...
Will you do that?
I would be very grateful, because I, as an engineer, and I spend a lot of time out on construction sites, I do not see how that section can be cleared in a way that makes these solar panels work without wholesale plants.
Well, you know, I want it to work for everybody.
Thank you. I'm very grateful for that.
And let's not leave any options unturned. I mean, how do you say that?
Thank you.
I want to look at all the options, all right? But at the same time, I don't want to slow this down at all either.
Can we buy some of the debt for mitigation and flip it to another piece?
Yeah. Can we use mitigation funds to buy it and flip it back to them?
We can look at that. It would be a challenge only in that mitigation has to be for perpetuity, and it has to meet certain criteria, but that's one of the options we would look at.
Well, it sounds to me like these folks want it for perpetuity, right?
Yes, I would.
If we make the rules, sure, but there's other people that make the rules, so we have to look at it.
But it's still... I keep meaning to do something about that.
What's... If I'm understanding, the only agency that has any...
Come up to the podium, please.
As the only entity that's actually issuing a discretionary permit on this project, Lancaster is the only city that can, only entity that can make that happen, because the AVA-QMD is not issuing any permits whatsoever.
I get it. I'm good.
Thank you.
All right. You guys know where I want to go, all right? Good. You know, I've got a whole bunch of cards. Would you all mind if I made it a minute and a half instead of three minutes?
You'd mind.
You'd mind, huh? But wait a minute, you know, you're here to persuade us. You sure you mind?
We've been waiting about hours last night.
Okay.
Yes.
Yolita Dines. Ah, okay. I blame you for this.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and honorable members of council. My name is Yolita Dines. I'm here this evening on behalf of Creed LA. We are the Coalition for Responsible, Equitable, and Economic Development. We track all projects, including photovoltaic projects throughout LA County. We support both of these solar energy projects. We feel that these will create enough renewable energy to power approximately 45,000 homes with clean and sustainable electricity. This project will create jobs. However, these are more than just jobs. These are careers.
Did you say 45,000?
Yes.
This project is 45,000?
The two megawatt projects, yes. I'm speaking on both of them.
Damn.
It's a lot of homes. So these jobs, actually more than jobs, were creating careers that offer world-class apprenticeship programs. These apprenticeship programs have continuing education, as you know, and so we feel it's a win-win for the city. It's, from what you've discussed this evening, I feel like S-Power is going to mitigate all the issues that you have with your environmental dust and all the things that have been discussed this evening. They seem very amenable to all of that, and so in protecting the health of the community, this is a much-needed economic development project. So we ask for your support, and thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. And thanks for telling me how big it was. That's really cool. Well, sorry about that. I mean, it's a lot of homes. Patrick Gorham?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Patrick Gorham. I'm an instructor for a local apprenticeship for the IBW, as well as a supervisor for the local contractor who does a lot of the work on these projects. And we've created a lot of jobs for a lot of people on these projects, and these people need this work to feed their families, and they are good members of your community. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Michael Flanagan?
Michelle.
Michelle Flanagan, I'm sorry.
I like Michael, too.
Welcome, Michael. Marvin changed the writing on the card, so I would...
It's okay. I've been called Michael my whole life. Good evening, council. Back in January, I attended an Antelope Acres Town Council meeting where I live in the Acres, so I was looking for information. And then I heard about the last planning commission meeting, so I came here. I honestly had no intention of speaking, but after listening to all of the speakers, I felt compelled to speak. I've lived in the Acres for over 13 years. Now, probably not as long as most of these people back here. They probably lived there longer than I have. And living in a rural community, first of all, is not for the faint of heart. When a lot of projects started, I used to live out at Avenue A and 90th, and there was an almond orchard that was developed out there, and it created ridiculous amounts of dust. And that affected my house. I did get a lot of dust in my house. After that was all taken care of, didn't have any dust. I am probably the only person in this room right now who lives due east of a current S-project, S-Power project. I do not have...I have horses, mules, donkeys, chickens, dogs, E-I-E-I-O. None of them, none of them have been affected by valley fever, and praise God, that has happened. I've not had any problems. Some of the people tonight may speak about...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. These are diseases that take 10, 15 years sometimes to mature. The...I don't know that we can look at the animals and say the animals are fine, so the people are fine. I mean, I don't want to minimize it. I want us to really look at it.
Oh, I agree.
And make the right decision as to how to mitigate it.
I agree, 100%. I've lived there since 2009, and that project hasn't...you're right, it has not been going on, but I haven't had the dust control problem that they're going to be speaking on, which just may mean that the property that they developed west of me doesn't have the same kind of issues of the property that they're discussing now. We've talked about snakes and rabbits and different animals that have come onto my property. I haven't seen any more of those than I have seen the past eight years that I've lived there. Thanks for it.
She gets more time, I guess.
Yeah.
This is a very time-sensitive crowd, okay?
And basically, living out in the Acres, I love the Acres. I moved out there to frankly get away from people and to be part of a smaller community. I love my neighbors. I also don't mind the solar fields. I live in the middle of a lot of them, and I don't have a problem with them at all. So that's all I wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Don Newton? Good evening.
My name is Don Newton. I live out in the Acres. And I'd just like to comment on the environmental engineer here that was making news about the northeast corridor of that graph you had up there. Well, I live directly behind that on 93rd Street West. At I, along with Brett Banks, Dustbusters, LA County, and Southern California, Addison. For years, when I moved out there, my place was just covered with sand and dust. I mean, we're talking feet. So it took me a number of years to mitigate that property and to eliminate that dust. And then over the years, I worked with Dustbusters, with the AQMD, and Brett, and LA County, and we were able to stabilize that piece of property that the environmental engineer was talking about. There's a 40-acre piece back there that has been covered with mulch, because we've...I worked with some of these engineers, and we discovered that mulch is a very good agent to help stabilize land as far as dust. So that piece right now is stabilized. There's a rabbit brush and another type of fluorofonat that I can't remember right now, but that's growing there right now, along with tumbleweeds. So it does retain the moisture, and after all these rains we've had, I'm sure that there'll be a lot of new vegetation that will have taken place. So I too, I'm not trying to stop any kind of construction. I just think that it should be looked at a little more carefully, because the dust is a big problem. I mean, if you come out there with a grader or any kind of thing to disturb the land, and the wind's blowing, it's going to blow right directly into the Acres, because I witnessed it, and Brett will attest to that, because I've had numerous people out there from the city and county on my back porch, and we discussed this over the years. So I just want you to take a careful consideration of the project and the kind of impact it could possibly have, not only in the health ways, but just in the dust itself. So that's really what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. John DeWor?
Thank you, Mayor Paris and Board, for allowing me to talk. I have left just a few. This was from the Antelope Valley News on the dust. It was meant for the last meeting. I have it here. I am an IBW member. I put that in my card. However, I represent what I feel myself is the best interest of the Antelope Valley, or at least Lancaster. I work as a...I've been a foreman and a steward on these jobs since 2011. My greatest privilege was being a steward where I represented not a company, but the men and their best interest, and several of them here tonight. If you don't mind, the IBW members, would you please stand up? These are all working gentlemen. They all support their families.
How do I know they're gentlemen?
Well, you know. At least I consider them. They feed their families. I feed my family through this. I have been on these jobs, and I've been out here since 2000...or I'm sorry, 1987. I have been here. There used to be this wonderful French restaurant over on I and 10th. And I remember trying to get...a long time ago, it was there. I'm a bit of a gourmet. It was there. It was right next to the bridge here, and I remember coming out, and I couldn't get across I and 10th because of the dust. You couldn't see. You had to inch out. The dust is here.
But let's...certainly, we have dust storms whether we have construction or not. I mean, everybody here will agree to that, right? Anybody disagree with that? The issue to me isn't that, you know, this is a problem that construction has created. The issue to me is are we doing everything we can in an economically feasible fashion to cause as few problems as possible when you have, you know, any type of disruption?
And I...
And I think that's where I want the conversation focused, all right, is what is feasible? What are the time constraints, and what are the costs that we're looking at? And what I don't want is you, the companies, it's S-Solar, but if there's any others, to stay quiet on it, you know, because I don't want people to be...you guys can sit down. I appreciate you being here. I don't want to slow projects down, but if we have to do it in phases, that's something we can look at.
Well, then my expertise would be on the well-being of the men and how these projects have been done since 2011. And what I have seen, the very first project was on 170th. It was the largest one at that time. And they started grading, and they were told they were no longer allowed to grade. That particular company was First Solar, and they stopped grading. Since then, I have worked on for five different contractors and I believe five different developers. They have complied with whatever was asked, even to the detriment to men, if I can say that, because it was hard for the men to pull the equipment through, but it had to be done that way because we couldn't grade. Grading would have been better, but they did what they were supposed to do. They were passionate about being good neighbors. I, you know, Pat Gorham over here, I've worked with him, and we had some problems with some of the men at some of the local businesses, and we straightened them out. Pat talked to them. I went out and talked to them. We made sure they understood how to be good for the community. We talked to them about driving. We talked to them about everything. We were passionate about it. And these gentlemen...
Wait a minute. My understanding is IBW isn't going to let anybody screw up on this.
No.
I mean, that's one of the...how I like to view what we're doing. It's a partnership between business, labor, and the company.
Yes.
And as long as that continues, we're happy.
That's good.
But I want you guys to recognize that we're not just looking at the company. We're looking at IBW, too.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I'm aware of what we passed in this city to create that partnership, and I want to make certain we're getting the payoff, and this is the payoff.
You want to know where the payoff is, Mayor Paris? We have gentlemen who, a year, two years ago, were trying to feed their families by selling drugs on the street. Now they're working and they're proud. How can you go against that?
You probably should have held that one back.
I mean, I'm not kidding. I've had these gentlemen come up to me, just thanking me.
I get it. Okay.
That's what I had to say.
We're glad you're involved in this. We really are.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Paris.
Although I still haven't forgiven you for that Palmdale Power Plant.
Oh, okay.
Joseph Sullivan. There he is. This is...
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board, staff. Well, I'm Joseph Sullivan.
You're here to apologize for the power plant in Palmdale, right?
No, I'm here to applaud the City of Lancaster. So I work for the National Electrical Contractors Association of Greater Los Angeles and the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 11. This represents about 350 electrical contractors who employ a little over 10,000 electricians, all within LA County. And first of all, I want to acknowledge that I've heard you say loud and clear, safety first, air quality first. And I want to use this as an opportunity, too, because I don't speak here often, to thank you for all the sustainable careers and lives and families you've affected and you've changed. From solar projects like these, these utility-scale solar projects in Lancaster alone, we've had to hire hundreds of people into our apprenticeship program. Many of these people are underemployed. I didn't know they're drug dealers, but that's true, too. A lot of them go part-time in Walmart or Walgreens or somewhere, and their lives have changed. Our apprenticeship programs...
I'm sure that's what he meant, Walgreens.
Those drugs are probably worse. Ours is a five-year apprenticeship program. The apprentices pay nothing. It includes books, includes tools. They have full family medical at their fourth month, which is remarkable. They have lifelong careers to work anywhere in the US or Canada. They retire with pensions and annuity. They retire with integrity. We focus on our recruitment of hiring disadvantaged local people, minorities, veterans. Our goal is 50% returning veterans, and we're getting there. Our apprenticeship program, we just spent $13 million redoing it. It's the largest net-zero retrofitted building in the country. It has...we display new technologies there to teach people on these technologies. It has a microgrid that's been emulated by the military all over the country. So the lives you're changing, it's remarkable. And it's through people like the City of Lancaster. So we say thank you for that. And if this is a safe project with good air quality, we strongly encourage you to support it. You know, you guys are leading the nation. We're glad to be partners with you. We've worked with S-Power for years and found them to have the highest integrity. We're very proud of our partnership. Thanks.
Thank you. Garrett? You know, Garrett, I think I want to put you at the end, okay? So that way you can...I mean, I want you to hear everybody before you respond. Judith Fuentes?
I oppose the projects because of aesthetics. Industrial renewable energy generating facilities are sprawling conglomerates. They do nothing to enhance the vista as you approach the city from outskirts as a visitor, nor do they enhance the aesthetics of my rural community. I'm concerned about the dust, valley fever, all air quality issues, and possible effects from the close-by electromagnetic fields. I'm concerned about loss of property value in my area and the effect of noise and vibration from construction, equipment, trucks, impale drivers, and motorized panel tilters, if that's what they're called. I'm very concerned about loss of the dark night sky to the west because of light pollution for security sake. Planning Department has all my comments from their hearings on this. I would like them to be included. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lou Nelson?
Good evening. I'm a 29-year resident of Antelope Acres, and I love my community. And I've heard some positive things tonight that are really encouraging, but I would like to remind you of a few things. Dr. Angie Lauer, who is a biology professor at the University of Bakersfield, University of California at Bakersfield, has recently done a valley fever spore test in our area. You have it as part of your package. She's indicated... She's indicated that adjacent to these projects is the Rosemond clay that is most likely to contain valleys fever spores. In December, I submitted a Los Angeles County Health Department letter that indicated that, as Mr. Ludicki indicated earlier, that since valley fever is endemic to our area, that the public health department now considers it built in and an automatic assumption that it will be there. Given that, I'm very surprised that the Los Angeles County Health Department has not been included in doing reviews on any of these projects. And I'd like to know if we can change that. I'd like to see the Health Department have an opportunity to comment and indicate what their assumptions are and any new information that comes up. As you mentioned earlier, we have multiple pulmonary problems as well as pulmonary heart conditions that are being created with fugitive dust. I would like to see some kind of confirmation that the Health Department will have not only an opportunity to comment on these projects, but to assist in helping Lancaster City accomplish some forward-looking policies that have to do not only with the valley fever problem, but with the COPD issues, the asthma issues, because our area does have the highest problem. Just to let you know, we had in January, 616 of our residents and friends signed petitions against this project. We realize that it's more than likely something that we're going to have to deal with, but I would like to bring up an issue about AVA QMD and fugitive dust rule 403. In my opinion, it is inadequate to accomplish permanent solutions to the fugitive dust problem until we get into a situation where we're creating restoration rather than mitigating fugitive dust, whatever the climatic conditions are. I ask you to create a situation where we will have an EIR so that we have more confidence in the biological studies and as well as the scientific studies that are necessary. And I ask that you please add specific conditions to the existing berms, the sand walls that won't be touched, work only to be done in five acre sections, and each area to be mulched to guarantee that our residents' health and safety will be perpetuated. And so I think that that would be good. And I would like to know why the Health Department is not included in these reviews.
You know, I don't know the answer to that. I know that they certainly sometimes are involved in things and sometimes aren't, but I simply don't have a lot of confidence. That's the reality of it. That's why I want to go outside the county. I want to, I mean, for lung disease, there is no better facility than the National Jewish Hospital in Denver. So let's go to the best there is and find out.
Okay. How about this? How about a group of our residents being included in some of these talks and some of these AVA QMD reviews? We don't feel that fugitive dust rule 403 is doing a good job.
I get that, and I would like to see that happen. Whether you're in the city or out of the city, I really don't care. I think whenever we have citizens that want to get involved, they should be involved. But there's some caveats, and that is, I don't want it slowed down. I don't want to make it so that they no longer become profitable. And I do that with all businesses in the county. That doesn't mean that we... It means you have to look at your role as how do we find the middle so that we have the least health consequence, the least environmental consequence, without sacrificing the project?
All of those people that are sitting back there are my neighbors, and I care very much about their health and well-being.
Okay, but you see, but you're missing the other part of it.
No, I get it. I understand the financial house bills.
This is not a yes/no situation. It is how do we find the best project? And if anybody who wants to take part in that, I welcome them, and I will figure out a way to create a structure that allows for that and actually fosters that. Toy has a unique ability to do this, and if Mark wants to assign it to her, that's her next project, all right? I really do...
I'm sure that we have many people that would like to participate in giving our opinions and our assistance.
And I'm happy to listen to their opinions, but as far as the number of people that are involved in the process, the more people you involve, the less efficient it becomes. You know, there's a set number, and I'm going to leave that to Toy to decide.
Well, good. We'll talk to Toy.
Okay. I think you'll find the process to be beneficial. But again, that is where we want to get, is how do we do this in the best possible way with the least consequence to human beings? But sometimes people don't like the science behind it. And you know, just because there's a dust cloud in the distance doesn't mean it's affecting you. If we have some type of measuring device that says it is affecting you, then you're going to find us very upset. But you see the difference?
That brings me to my last request.
Yes.
I would like very much to see specific monitoring equipment be installed on every project.
That you got to talk to Toy about now.
Well, okay. Toy, we're going to have a lot of really nice conversations.
Now, understand what Toy does. Toy is the facilitator. It's actually planning and everybody else that has individual roles in it. I don't mean to be screwing up the hierarchy around here. What I find you do exceptionally well is facilitate the bringing people together. Before we take a break, the other thing I want you to all think about is if we're going to piece this project, do we have time to send it back to planning to deal with some of these issues? Just think about it. Tell me when we get back from the break. But again, I do not want to raise the cost of the project, and I do not want to slow it down. But at the same time, I'm not sure that all of these issues have been looked at, okay? So figure out a way to make us all happy. And let's take a break, all right? Okay. Y'all ready? Harry Redenbaugh?
Good evening. I like to talk about the dust that's created by this project and the increasing number of people have valley fever. Now, valley fever to some people is just two words on a page and a percentage. But if you get valley fever, it's a different story. Now, the majority of us that are exposed to valley fever, and most of you probably have, you won't get it, but the minority that gets it, you pay a toll. It takes a bite out of your life. I know, because I came down with it 18 months ago. I like to make a picture of it, just a word on a page. When I came down with it, first I had fatigue, severe fatigue, and then I had heavy breathing. So I went to the doctor. They took an X-ray and they said, "Probably pneumonia. Could be valley fever, though." They gave me antibiotics, told me to come back in three weeks. Came back three weeks after having nonstop headaches, not able to keep anything down, lost 23 pounds. They took a new X-ray, said, "We're going to take a blood sample for valley fever. It'll be two weeks before we get the results." In the meantime, we want you to go see an infectious control doctor, which I did that afternoon. And she says, "Tell me your story." And I started to talk. I got three sentences in it. She says, "Stop. You have valley fever, and I think this went to meningitis. You're going to the hospital right now." So 40 minutes later, I was getting a spinal tap and then a CAT scan and a IV. I was there three days. Then after I left, I took 800 milligrams of flu cortisone for six months. It was six months before I started feeling better and a year before I got back to normal. Now I take two tablets a day of flu cortisone every day for the rest of my life. And by the way, it's $500 for a three-month supply. And then every four months, I get to go see an infectious control doctor. Now, we, before we lived in this valley, we've been here six years. We lived in the inland empire. Valley fever is endemic to it. I never knew anyone had valley fever. I never heard of anybody having valley fever. I thought it was some obscure disease. Since I got valley fever, I'm amazed at the number of people we've run into. Soon as they learn I had valley fever, they tell me either they had it or somebody in their family. Thing is, I don't want anybody else to come down with valley fever. Even the people I don't like, I don't want to have valley fever. I think these dusts that's created by the projects are just too close to this community. And I also don't understand why we let the children at Del Sur be surrounded on three sides by these industrial solar panels. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sherri Myers?
I'm encouraged by what we've heard tonight, but I'm going to go ahead and read what I'm going to read. The residents of Antelope Bakers, including our pets, our horses, livestock, and farm animals, will be subjected to one to two years of construction traffic, heavy equipment traffic and noise, allowable six days a week from 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night by 210 S Power employees and their equipment descending on our community. Also trash and boxes cartwheeling across our desert floor labeled "Made in China," as we witnessed on their Avenue L and 90th Street West project. Pollution, fugitive dust, and most frightening, probable airborne and active valley fever spores. We are particularly fearful of this potentially deadly fungal disease. The Los Angeles County Department of Health states valley fever spores are a pathogen endemic in our soil. S Power employees must be scared to death. Wetting the soil to keep dust down only allows this fungal pathogen to reproduce more. The rural lifestyle and identity of our community will be changed forever by this massive invasive project that has absolutely no benefit to our community. We are ineligible to receive power from the eyesore of thousands and thousands of solar panels allowed to be 14 feet tall, caged in their ugly chain link and barbed wire top prisons, less than 100 feet from our properties. 14 feet tall. That's taller than the giant structure covering Costco gas station. There is no fencing or landscaping that will screen that. This is a utility scale power project that is inconsistent in a densely populated rural neighborhood. Council members, please hear us. Support us. Consider the well-being of our community members. Consider our quality of life. Be a council of leaders that actually listens to its community members. Show real leadership here tonight and reverse this insane decision to put 484 acres of solar panels on top of our rural community. And if you won't do this, return it back to the Planning Commission for enhanced standards.
Thank you. Cefi Tonman?
Good evening. My name is Cefi Tonman. I filed the appeal on behalf of my community. I've lived in the Antelope Bakers my entire life, and I'm raising my family there now. I had a speech prepared tonight, but instead, I want to thank you for your open-mindedness so far. You've shown a lot of thoughtfulness, the comments that have been made tonight. I know many of you personally, and I appreciate the fact that you're hearing us. Because so often, we are dismissed, our comments are ignored, and our community as a whole doesn't get listened to or included in massive projects that impact us and give us absolutely no benefits. As you've heard, we're ineligible for the reduced power. The jobs are short-term. Our roadways, our properties, our children, our livestock are at risk for these projects. So the fact that we can work together to enhance the mitigating measures so that this project and those that are certain to come after it can benefit everybody is critical, and I applaud you for that. This project is unlike any other, and therefore, the mitigating measures and the CUP standards must be unlike any other. I am in fear of the health of my children. My father-in-law is a local valley fever survivor. I have seen firsthand its debilitating effects. The facts show that the CUP as it's written is insufficient, and you as the lead agency are the only ones with the power to change that. So we are asking you, please, send this back to the Planning Commission. Let's work together. Let's enhance the mitigation measures. Let's eliminate the health risks. Let's create more adequate setbacks from homes. Let's enforce sustainable native landscape screening. Let's protect our property values. Let's protect our families. And please help us protect our rural residential way of life. Thank you.
Cefi, what specific mitigation measures do you want us to add to this?
Most specifically is the focus on valley fever. I feel it's a very disingenuous statement that the staff report says it has been considered when besides that, it's mentioned nowhere else. Until tonight, there was a lot of discussion about it. Mitigation measures need to be implemented that immediately address that problem, and there are ongoing measures that monitor...
Yeah, but you and I both know that we don't really know how to address it. I mean, if you have construction, you're going to have disturbing the earth. It seems to me that the way we have them building these things is you have the least amount of disturbance of the soil than you would if you were building a housing tract.
That has not been our experience as the residents living immediately downwind of these projects. We've had brownout dust storm events. We've had over 500% increase in valley fever cases in the time span that these projects have really begun to start on our west side. I think there's a direct correlation there.
Okay, but what I'm asking you is what do we do to mitigate it?
We abandon this project.
Okay. That's really what we're talking about, right? So, I mean, that's really not, it's not feasible.
We pursue projects that are not immediately upwind of thousands of residents. Because we are all about jobs. We are all about alternative energy. You have not seen organized opposition like this on any other solar project in the years that you've been championing these amazing projects. Because this one is unlike any other. It's incompatible. The CUP is...
But now we're... This is not a meeting about mitigation measures. It's about not letting them do it at all.
That would be our number one goal.
And I don't know that I even have the constitutional power to do that. I mean, that's a taking.
I think you'd rely on the clear fact-based violations of SEQA and your own zoning and general plan ordinances to at least significantly delay a project like this until we can all determine what mitigating measures can in fact solve these problems. Because I think the question that you asked me, what mitigating measures, what I'd like to see, I don't know that we have the technical, scientific-based research to answer that question to a degree that would protect myself, my children, my neighbors. Garrett, are you messing with my mic?
Well, we can have this discussion for hours. The reality is, I need something more from you that reaches the middle ground rather than getting rid of the project. And I think that we really need to redirect our efforts in that regard.
After the thoughtfulness that you guys have given... After the thoughtfulness that you guys have given to the comments we've made, I know I am certainly in a position to look forward to doing that. The timeframe that we've been given, 10 days to file the appeal, there was a very short notification period. A lot of us have not had a lot of time to pour over hundreds of pages of documents, very technical data. We're only now starting to really grasp the scope of what is descending upon us. And so, although tonight, I am not prepared with a detailed list of technical requests, that is something that we are working towards and would look forward to incorporating into the CUP if you would please kick it back to planning so that we can do that.
That's unlikely to happen. I mean, I'm only one vote, but it's unlikely to happen. So, you know, I really think I want that group up and running.
Yes.
Is Del Sur school downwind of this?
No, Del Sur is south of this project, by two miles.
All right, so I don't have to worry about a dust cloud enveloping the school, right?
When you have Santa Ana's, there's certainly a potential for it, because now things are running in the opposite direction. But the likely receptor is us.
One of the things we should be paying attention to is having a real proactive monitoring program, so that if it looks like that's going to happen with the schools, we're taking preventative measures. The, put your group together and pay attention to this, all right? Thank you, Cephe.
Thank you.
It's probably difficult to read when I write stock notes. It's Melissa Guevara?
Guevara, I missed the R. Thank you.
A lot of people have already spoken about the repercussions from the dust, and I'm kind of going to focus a little bit on a different take. My thought on any large project is to make sure that all the alternatives are utilized. So for large solar farms that take up huge amounts of acreage, it was 480 acres, I believe, I think it's important to look at other aspects. New sustainable technologies are coming up all the time, like solar tiles, bladeless windmills, things like that. And Lancaster has been a big leader in lots of new technologies and pushing sustainable. So that's important. That's a factor that I think Lancaster needs to keep going in that direction. Also, other, I know that in the past, and I think currently, there have been incentives for rooftop solar, and I think that that could be another alternative, is increasing the capacity for solar in that manner. And other ways that we can help with efficiency would be focusing on efficiency in heating, cooling technologies, construction technologies, and other energy uses. And centralization of community resources and limits to sprawl. And I think there have been efforts in that way, like in the new health district that was being proposed today. So continuing in that manner is, I think, probably an effective way to continue. And from my own perspective, 480 acres and in future projects, even bigger acreages affected, that can also be considered sprawl. So I'm not against solar or other sustainables, but I just hope that they're always used wisely.
You know, it's a problem. You can't have both. We can't have energy that isn't destroying the planet without having it unsightly. I mean, I don't like looking at those fields. It gives me pause every time I fly over the city. Are we really doing the right thing here? But at the end of the day, I really do think we're in a race to save the planet. And we can produce more electrons in this area than any other place in the country. We're blessed and cursed. I wish I could break the news easier, but we're going to power the southwest, and that is a problem. It's not all a blessing. You know, I mean, I could sit up here and act like we're not going to do that, or that this isn't just the beginning. It is. Okay? Sorry. I mean, I don't know what to do.
No, it's just important that everything's looked at. So I'm glad that you guys have been very thoughtful in looking at all the aspects today. Thank you.
We will do it as safely as we can, and we hope that you help us do that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Aria? Ari? Ara? Ara? Right?
Hello, Mayor and council members. Thanks for having me tonight. I'm just in solidarity with all the speakers who came before me with amazing details about this project. I love the fact that we're moving in the direction of renewable energy. Solar is wonderful. Wind is wonderful, too. But it has to be done in a more sustainable way. You know, valley fever is a huge concern, and I'm sure there are other ways to do solar than, you know, huge farms that will destroy ecosystems and disrupt dusts all at once on a very large scale. So I would look into possibly incentivizing rooftop, integrating solar into our city. You know, I think other people have spoken a lot better. I don't have all the details. Maybe the location is not the ideal location, you know, if it's too close to the community, and the dusts might be threatening them that way. But I think in general, solar farms are not sustainable solar. You know, if you want to do sustainable energy, we want to do it the right way, not a way that's going to destroy the environment. Thank you.
I'm not sure everybody's aware of the reason for the locations. You know, you have to have interconnect agreements with Southern California Edison. It's not like we can just go put it someplace else. It's got to be able to get on the grid. That's one of the difficulties of moving these things around. We really don't have that luxury. You know, it's, there's a lot of science that goes into this, and...
Absolutely. What about, you know, more rooftop solar and things like that?
Well, it's not commercially feasible. I mean, we do have a requirement that all new construction has rooftop solar now. I think next year, all of our houses will be net zero, meaning they produce as much power as they use. But again, this stuff is the beginning, because we really have to turn around the way we do everything.
I just would encourage, you know, to look, you know, look at the project again. I'd say abandon it and try to find something that's going to be better for our community and better for the environment.
But ultimately, you're asking us to abandon, you know, I don't know how many tens of millions of dollars are into this project.
Tens of million dollars for whom?
Well, the point of it is, is you're asking us to abandon something that belongs to somebody else that has every right in the world to invest in the project for aesthetic reasons. That's really what it comes down to. Now, that's why I'm focusing totally on the health reasons.
Right, but there should be some regulations. There should be some...
We don't have a right to control the aesthetics of somebody else's property. How do you do that? How do you do that? Say, no, you can't build that because the neighbors don't like the way it looks.
Absolutely. Not the way it looks. You know, we're talking about the environmental impacts and the health impacts.
That's why I'm focusing, that's why I'm focusing all the energy on mitigating the health consequences.
There should be some sort of regulations, and, I mean, isn't that what government is for, to be able to properly regulate these types of projects?
Within limits. Within limits.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I think that, you know, we're really, that's why we have a city attorney, but we're...
I mean, but what's the rush? Let's do it the right way, you know? Take our time and figure out the right way to do it.
Because what you're really, because I'm just not buying it, that's why. If I thought that by slowing it down, we could have a solution, I would say, let's slow it down. But that's not really what this is about. What this is really about is, let's not let them build it. And no, we're going to power the southwest from the Antelope Valley. That's what we're going to do. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. David Hall?
Hi.
Hi.
David Hall.
I guess I'm everybody's favorite person tonight, aren't I?
And first of all, I would like to say that I think everybody here appreciates what you've done tonight. You're really paying attention, and I don't think a lot of people thought you were going to. When I first moved out to West AV 10 years ago, it was miles of nothing. Nothing but open prairies of grassland and wildflowers waving in the breeze. There were deer, coyote, ground squirrels, the occasional mountain lion, dozens of burling owls, and much more nature than I have time to enlist here tonight. The point is this: Instead of having this fantastic nature wherever you look, now you look over a sea of dead glass, covering and disrupting huge chunks of land, areas that will never be the same. No longer will the hillsides glow with the colors of wildflowers or wildlife be able to roam, as they've done for thousands of years. These huge plants have now fenced off, been fenced off for eternity. Just walk around these areas, you'll notice the game trails come right up to the fences and stop, forever. And now the worst decisions so far were to put yet one more of these ISORs, this time in an area that everyone knows. It will end up sending huge clouds of dust, possibly with valley fever, into the neighborhoods immediately to the east and way beyond into town. The history of this area is well-known. All anyone has to do is ask anyone who knows to find out that particular plot cannot be disturbed again. It has been tried many times in the past. Bottom line is this: It's just wrong to sacrifice these citizens' well-being for this poorly engineered and researched project. This is your chance to do what's right. Send it back to planning. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, it's odd having this conversation with you, because you're all environmentally-minded people. You know, I mean, that's why you live out there. I'm not supposed to do that, but come on in. The, but remember something. The last time there was this much carbon in the air, there were crocodiles in Canada. There's every reason to believe we can't turn it around. But we're doing everything we can here, and that's important to me. I think it might be important to you. Unfortunately, it's in your backyard.
I wanted to clarify a comment that you said you had no right to tell them what to do with their properties based on aesthetics, which is a lot of what you're hearing on tonight. But in actuality, the zoning ordinance does include that expressly as a requirement, in addition to property values, compatibility with neighboring land uses, so...
Then where could you put, if not there, where?
Further west. They are a multi-billion-dollar hedge fund-run company. Let's get them to expand the transmission lines, the gen tie-ins. I don't want to speak on any technicality, because I don't know all of that information, but I know that it can be done to a degree that is greater than 80 feet from our properties.
Two to five years to get an interconnect agreement. Two to five years. You know, that's any type, that's what delay means. Now, I know that that would be conducive to, and I get it. I mean, I didn't like it when they built the houses that blocked my view of the mountains, but I didn't have any right to do anything about it.
You have a right to do something about it now.
But should I?
Yes.
Should they?
Yes.
I'm just not there yet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Carley?
I'm a local contractor, solar contractor. I put it on houses, not big plants. But, you know, the plant, with its design to put right across from all the residences that already have problems from all the dust that has been there for years, the residents at this point, a lot of us talked about we should sell our homes. Except you can check even on Zillow, which isn't that factual, but it's kind of, the property values have dropped. If I want to list my house, I have to tell a realtor that that farm is going to be there, and they have to tell the buyers, and they're not going to buy my house. So I have a loan problem. The hospital, I mean Kaiser, says, you can't live there anymore. I can't sell my house because of the solar project. I don't know how that works for me. I don't know how that works for a lot of people. But I would think that the managers of solar power, they have this plant, S-Power, and the employees, we want them all to have work, and we wish they had work. And maybe you can move it to another spot that isn't so detrimental to the area. But to put it there seems to me to be like a death warrant to people. And I don't think that you or the people that work there, these people are trying to support their families by killing us. I don't think it's right. I think that they should support their family in a facility that is safe for everyone. Move it down a few miles. I'm sure there's a way to get an interconnect agreement some way with the utility company. They want the power.
Listen, I had to threaten to red-tag their poles, and I still couldn't get interconnect agreements. I mean, they're almost immovable.
Yeah, well, if they...
The price they got them.
If they want the power from the plant, or the plants we have...
They don't.
Then they'd have to move and really work with it a little bit.
We understand Edison doesn't want this power. Edison likes it the way it used to be. You know, they'd like to open up San Onofre again. I mean, the politics of this are really complex.
Costs seven times as much to make solar power as it does to make nuclear, make coal, make power number in other ways. The new energy...
That's not accurate. It used to be, but it's not anymore.
You don't think so?
No, you can actually make, you can produce solar energy cheaper than you can by just about any other method, except, you know, the new nuclear plants have a lot of promise.
They do.
But the US isn't going anywhere near those.
Yeah, well, I think S-Power should consider their cost of what, what kind of lawsuits that they're going to get afterwards by putting a plant in that is known to cause a problem, so...
I would suggest that they look at that.
Well, I did talk to a class action attorney already, and they said they can't start it until they start construction. When they start construction, we'll start our suit. Thank you.
Okay. Paul Henried? Henried?
The government's making me tired tonight, because it's almost 8:00 PM and you all are still working. So thank you for being open to that. I do have some questions. I have property just a few hundred feet from this parcel, and maybe unlike some of these other people, I'm probably the craziest person in this room that spends not just his own time, but his own money, thousands of dollars, to clean this up. It's a landfill. It's full of trash. So the one benefit of this property construction is that presumably they'd be cleaning up what is now essentially a landfill. I'm also the president of the NINAC in Oso Town Council, and we use solar company donations to fund that cleanup. So I would hope that there'd be some mechanism by which S-Power would help fund cleaning up and hopefully paving 100th Street. There's a question lurking in my mind: Over a 10-year period, what's going to kick up more dust? The trucks driving up and down their dirt roads? Or the solar panels that just sit there every day? Mayor Paris, you asked a very good question. So I'm president of the town council, I'm a property owner right there, I'm a former big firm lawyer at Environmental Toxic Torque Department, and so the question of soil testing, why now? Why wasn't it done before? As to your question, why here? 110th Street, a few miles away, is nothing but land, and the land now is cheap. You can go to auction and get it for anywhere between $1,000 and $2,000 an acre. So there are questions regarding, why wouldn't they park a solar plant literally right by the grid? Now, what they're doing instead at 140th Street, which is the border for Antelope Acres, is they've got over 200 acres of trashy mulch from LA City that they've dumped. It blows about a mile a month. I can smell it from 100th Street just last night, when you're downwind. So the idea of using mulch to cover it up, or just make sure it's clean and not full of a bunch of, literally, pardon the expression, crap, and ground it up, household trash from the city of LA. Now, does the REO from the county govern... Now, does the REO from the county govern? And when we're talking, when I keep hearing this reference to zoning laws, is that the governing...
I wouldn't think so, but...
I wouldn't think so either, because the city annexed it. But I keep hearing zoning law.
No, it's within the city's jurisdiction for zoning.
Has, uh, has there any been, has there been any discussion regarding a brick wall on the downwind side, which would be the east side of this, of this parcel?
I'm confident that there has been.
You could get it done. And has there been any soil testing thus far?
That, that's my concern. I, I don't think there has been. And, and I think that's the first step we have to, to, to look at, and should have been looked at 10 years ago. But, you know, we don't have a health department. We rely on the county health department. And I've just learned that we got to figure out a way to move around it.
If the solar company helps pave the roads, I see that as a mitigating factor for the whole community that would give something back. They've done it in Fairmont at 170th Street. The county's going to keep stonewalling us, as well as the Assemblyman.
You know, be careful what you wish for.
I, I understand.
I mean, you build a road, they do come. You know? I mean, I'm serious. If you want to increase the population out there, build another road.
Well, you can also increase the property values.
There's that. There's that. I don't know what work has been done in regards to the mitigation.
I don't recall any discussion of a block wall on the east side.
That's not what I'm talking about.
As far as...
Well, I mean, what has been done mitigation-wise to enhance the community? Anything? Have we dealt with that at all?
The city's typical approach is to require the landscape setback.
Okay.
The, the roads are private under the track map. So 100th Street from F to 138, the highway, the county says, "We're not touching it because it's, it's private." So if Solar Power, S-Power, already owns the property, and I'm looking at it going, "Why haven't they, they haven't paved the road? They haven't cleaned up this landfill?" At the very least, at this stage in the game, you'd think that they would have gotten out there and done all the stuff that I've been doing, cleaning up the trash.
I've, I've never found it productive to look in the past and say, you know, I mean, we're, we're, we're here now. Where are we going to be tomorrow? That's what I'm most concerned about. And whatever, however that group forms, you should be on it. Because I, I don't want it to be a, a face-saving thing. I want it to really look at these issues, and are we doing what we should be doing? For what it's worth. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Ellie Lyons.
Good evening. I'm a resident of Antelope Acres. My husband and I built our house out there 11 years ago, and although I'm encouraged in the positive direction that we're going in as far as valley fever, I feel like that's been real productive tonight. One of our biggest concerns is our property value. The panels are just getting closer and closer to our homes, and I just asked the commission just to push these panels back, get them away from our homes. You know, we know they're an eyesore, but we really don't want to lose our values in our homes. We love living out there. It's a great community, and that's, you know, the, the dust was the biggest concern in the health, but also our property values. And you had mentioned, you know, just the, the way technology is happening so fast and changing, what happens in 10 years when these panels are kind of obsolete and now, you know, energy has moved in a different direction? Are these panels going to sit out there and rot, and we're going to have all this rotting steel and glass? So that's something, you know, that, to think about, what's, you know, are they going to be made to come back and take these out? So that was, I just asked that you just stand up for the citizens of Antelope Acres and just, I know there's a cost factor involved when you have to move them away, but just please move them away from our homes. Thank you.
Thank you. Marvin tells me we have a provision in regards to them doing a tear-down. Is that right?
Yes, all of our solar projects have a decommissioning requirement is one of the conditions.
Okay. So how does that work when S-Solar sells the, all the projects?
The requirement goes with the land.
Okay, so we could take the land back if they don't. All right. Good. Thank you. Joshua Murphy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I want to say thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm very encouraged by what I've heard tonight as far as taking into consideration our health. As someone, I'm actually 100% service-connected, part of which is a disease I have from living in a sandbox in another part of the world. So this is very personal to me. And I have to say, for the few people who have kind of poo-pooed us for not liking the dust, try not being able to write with your right hand. Try having to take 14 medications every night so that you can control your muscles. So I'm, I'm very appreciative that, that you're taking this dust control issue seriously. I originally came here tonight with a speech prepared about the landscaping issues. I have pictures here. The landscaping looks like it hasn't been attended to in years, which...
We're, we're, we're going to have that discussion.
I, I understand, but this is something that's been brought up before, and it hasn't been addressed, and so I don't mean any disrespect, but it kind of erodes one's confidence in S-Power. If we have to call the city, to ask the city, to ask them and go out and water their plants, then it erodes our confidence that they're going to be responsible in more important issues.
Well, I, I don't know that it should be incumbent upon you. I think that we should be out there inspecting.
But it's, I appreciate you saying that, but it's obvious that it hasn't been happening for years.
You, you know, you got to bring it to our attention.
So it is incumbent on us, then?
Well, yeah. Yeah, under, understand something. The philosophy of this council is to do nothing for you. We have no intention to do anything for you. It is our intention to do things with you. This is a community, and the days of, of the community being over there and the government being over here never worked in the first place. But those days are over. The, the, the only way this works is if we recognize the mutual dependence on each other, if you want to have a community that's worth living in.
That's right.
Okay? So, yeah, that's true. It, it, if, if I fall down in, in my obligations to you, you're supposed to tell me. But trust me.
We will.
I'm going to tell you when you do. All right?
We will.
Okay. Good.
As appreciative as I am with the discussion that we've had tonight about the dust control, when we, when the statement is made that we just don't have enough data, then, then to say that we're still going to proceed with this, even though we don't have enough data, kind of says that these people behind me don't matter. It seems irresponsible to me that you would proceed when you don't know.
Well, I think...
We're not against the solar. We're not against all of this.
Well, a little bit.
Well, let me rephrase that. We're not against solar. We are against solar being put in one of the worst possible unstable, irresponsible locations. And to say, I forget, I apologize, I forget who said it, but to say that we might relocate you to protect you, that's saying, "We're going to kick you out of our house, so we can proceed with somebody else's progress and probably put you in a hotel somewhere." That's not right. That's immoral.
Well, what's more immoral? Knowing that there's a dust cloud going to envelope children and do nothing? Or if you know a dust cloud's going to envelope them, you move them?
What's, what's more moral is to do it the right way.
And, and, and if I could turn back the clock, in that we could live in a state of nature, I would. But I can't, and neither can you. We, we are, we are left with the mess that, that we have. We have got to change the way we do everything, and we're starting here. Okay?
I agree with that. But that doesn't mean putting it proceeding when you don't know. That's just irresponsible.
But isn't that the reverse of, isn't that exactly what they're saying in, in Washington when they talk about climate disruption? Well, it might not be true, so let's do nothing? I mean, isn't that the same thing?
Don't, don't get me started on Washington.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda Ford.
Hello, council members. Thank you for listening to me. I just want to say that as a 10-year-old, I have had valley fever, and I was so sickly I could barely stand up. And I grew up in the San Fernando Valley from all the construction, and I remember leaning against the wall at the doctor's office, barely able to stand. I now have a pulmonary nodule on my left lung, and that is from the valley fever. I've been told by my dermatologist that it can activate at any point in time. So I, looking, I live, my husband also has asthma. We live on 93rd and F8. We're in the front line of fire. And I have seen numerous times all this dust coming off of the Avenue G site, just off of, they're right about 95th, right there, and Avenue G. I have seen the dust. I have called. I have gotten no responses from anyone coming out to stop this dust from coming. I, I have a wonderful view of Lancaster and the valley, and all surrounds me. But I have seen the sheep, the sheep come in our plot that's right across from F8 there. They don't go, they don't take the sheep on the other side where the site is at the last couple of years. So it's not being sheaped off right now. I am so concerned about our health. I'm glad that you, Mayor Paris, are, are listening to us about our health. We have a lot of elderly people that live in this area also. I've been, we've been in, since 1983, we have lived in Antelope Acres, and we have loved every moment of it. We love our rural lifestyle. We are concerned about getting elderly now and maybe having to downsize. It concerns me that my house will not be worth anything, that I will even be able to move. We have asked Mr. Bean, "Would you live next to a solar right in your backyard?", and he said he would. But we love our, our rural lifestyle. We, I'm so proud to live on the west side of Lancaster, that is supposed, all these entire years, everybody has said, "The west side is the best side you can ever be on." It's not anything like, I don't want to poo-poo the east side, but our west side has been amazing. Our west side is not any longer going to be amazing. It's been beautiful, and I know you don't want to hear about the aesthetics of it.
That's not what I said. I said, "There's nothing I can do about that." I, I'm not going to sit here and tell you that your housing, your houses are going to go up in value. They're not.
No, they're not.
I mean, it, it isn't the beautiful place.
They're going to go down in value.
It isn't the beautiful place it used to be.
No.
The, what I, what I'm hoping that we're accomplishing, or will accomplish, is a way to make it as safe as possible.
Right. I don't think that this...
I wish I could give you more.
I don't think that this is the right site for, with, to, over 2,000-plus community members. I don't think this is the right place. There are, you have to pick and choose the right places to put this solar.
Unfortunately, Edison decided where these sites were going to go when they did the interconnects.
Right, but right behind our community like this is just endangering our lives. I don't want to live in that house every day, wondering if this dust is going to kill me or not.
Well, but once the project, once the project is built, you have less, less dust, not more. I mean, it, it...
It's, it was, it, it, that's not a proven fact yet, I don't believe, honestly. I have seen, I can see a lot of this dust and where it's coming from, from the view that I have, where I, where we are located. And the, the amount of dust, and you're talking about two years. How many people will get this valley fever in two years? Two years' construction time?
Well, the goal is to make certain no one does.
Right. And the only way you can do that is not put it in our backyards.
But what I, what I want everybody to get is, I want you in the process of figuring out a way to do this in a way that preserves the, the health of the people...
Right.
...in the area.
Right.
The, if your goal is to stop the project...
I think you could move the project further, further back.
Projects don't move like that.
I understand it's a huge monumental thing to do.
They just don't.
But, but it's, is it worth all of our 2,000-plus residents to, to become sick, to possibly die?
Well, if there was, if there was any, if there was any likelihood of that occurring, no, we would, we would do whatever we needed to, to stop it, but let's, let's, let's not exaggerate the issue.
Okay. But that may be too late for some people.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy McLaren.
Good evening, mayor and council people.
You know, you'd be a lot better mayor than your water board, remember?
I've been told that. First, I would like to say, there's a lot of members and workers, if they could just stand up, that were at a meeting, that weren't standing up before IBW members, that came after the meeting. Could you stand up?
They already did that.
No, other ones, because there was meetings. Okay? So we had some before, and then plus, we have a lot of workers that are single moms that would love to work on these projects and be able to get home and have that extra three hours. But what I want to show the people of the Antelope Acres, too, are, are, people aren't here just, only just talking about jobs. These workers are here because we're all invested in this community. As IBW, working with, with the national electrical contractors, most unions don't work hand-in-hand with their management. This is something we do very differently than other people do. So we are making sure that every one of our workers abides by a code of conduct. That code of conduct assures you and all these Antelope Acres people that our workers are going to be working safe, that they are going to take all these concerns into account. We're going to hold our contractors to that, and every single employee. The members can report another worker and put charges on them, if, if they see any kind of abuse like that. That's why we've also partnered with the city. We want and understand the need for the growth of all of us in energy, in all the different things. IBW is one of the main leaders. We are not only in utility solar, we're into energy storage. We have a great big facility, which I think most of you have saw and come out, and we are training our workers to be the best in all kinds of things. Yes, you might think this is just a short-term job, but everyone that's working on this gets this utility scale, as well as other scales, and they are careers. But I just want to assure everybody that, just like you asked us to be a part of any kind of testing, we're more than willing to do that. We want to be here for the community. A lot of us live here. I live here. We want to work with the community. We want to work with the citizens. We want to work with the council. We're here for whatever you need, and we're going to try to make this the very best project, safe as possible. Thank you.
Marvin says I should ask you about helmet-to-hard hats.
Yes, and our helmets-to-hard hats... Yes, and our helmets-to-hard hats, and our, our IBW manager is a Purple Heart recipient, and he has asked us to have 50% of veterans in our program. And so we are at exactly like 30% right now, and we just started really focusing on that. And that is something, too, that we're, we helped sponsor and help decorate on the Lancaster Boulevard, some of the people who were recognized by the families on your banner program. We're very into veterans and everything, and mind you, I'm not taking any, anything away from people worrying about their health or anything, but we've had zero valley fever cases. And we, as IBW and NICA, would not put any one of our families' lives, IBW families' lives, into way if we thought there was any danger. And, but we are looking at things, and I know, in talking to Garrett, that's another thing. We work hand-in-hand. I've had many discussions about him, about possibly putting solar panels up and start testing the different flowers and plants, because there is a problem. They die. We need to figure out why. But those are all things we can, we can work on. We can work on this together.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
I have a question.
Yes.
How many jobs, when you were saying, how many jobs has been created with that?
Mitch, would you like to stand up, since Mitch does our-
Yeah, well over 1,200, just on the one project going down from L along 90th Street to J. There were 1,200 jobs.
And how many are there permanent?
How many programs?
Permanent, permanent jobs?
As far as permanent, no construction is really permanent. It's construction.
No, but I mean, how long have they been doing though?
Oh, we've been doing this for five years.
Okay, so 1,200 for five years?
Oh, no, no, 1,200 just on this right here for, that's been going on for probably two years, but we've been doing, working this solar for at least five years. We first started with Alamo Valley Solar Ranch One, and that was 250 meg, and then we went over to Sun Power.
Mitch, can you come down to the podium?
Ta-da. Thank you. Sorry about that. So then we went over to the Sun Power project. That was Warren Buffett bought that. That was a 550-megawatt project. And just on the two projects at AVSR1, we had over 800 members working. So our members have been bouncing from one project to another to another, besides working residential, commercial, industrial. I can keep going if you want.
No, it's okay. I got my answer, though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Garrett.
What are you going to do about all this?
Well, I think that the first important thing is, S-Power does hear you. We listen to you. We've shown up at your meeting, and we've talked to you. We've talked to you outside of the meeting. We're going to continue listening to the Antelope Acres community and trying to work with you to find that solution. We know we're not going to be able to solve every issue for you, but we're here to try. Our construction managers are here at that last meeting. We probably pulled in about, maybe around eight of our supervisors out at the construction sites to come to the meeting, to listen to the concerns of the community, so they understand the importance, not just from the planning commission, but from the council, from the community, from the city staff as well. We understand that it's a tough site. There's no question about it. Just south of the site, we dealt with very similar terrain. It was the Delsor Solar Project that was approved a while ago. That has been completed, and we ran into, we had some challenges at that site. When we thought we were being able, going to be able to mitigate some of the dust with hydro seeding and things like that, we understood that we had to take it a step further. We started working with the planning staff, working with Brian and also Brett Banks on, what are the solutions to really stabilize this long-term? I think the really productive thing that came out of that is, we know how to deal with this type of soil. I've sat down personally with Brett and other team members that are going to be running that project, this project, and we have solutions that we know work in this type of soil condition. So I think it's important that we implement that. There's been tons of lessons learned over the past three years. We've been building projects out here for a long time. We understand the concerns of the community. We understand what we need to achieve those concerns. So I think that's, that's really what it is, is translating that into our project, working with Brett to make sure we address these concerns out there. We've already talked about the complex source fee rule, where Brett's team is going to be out there before we start on these sections of the project, to make sure that we have everything in line to build it in a safe manner. We'll continue to work with them. I think, you know, as we go through, sit down with the group, sit down with Antelope Acres, take some of their concerns in, into this process as well, start analyzing them. I think we will have that solution for you. I know we will, because we've done it before.
So what you're, what you're telling us, that you can build that whole project without any dust clouds going into these people's homes? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying that I think it is a completely manageable site if we implement those best practices. Will there be some dust coming up from behind a truck? Yes, there will be.
So what do we, what do we do when that dust hits their houses?
We have to make sure it doesn't. I think-
Okay, so what do we do, though, if it does? What kind of alarm system's in place? What kind of procedure is in place? What kind of education system is in place to, so people know what to do if that occurs?
Yeah, so there are several systems in place. Anytime dust, or the wind starts picking up above 25 miles an hour, all of the contractors are notified to stop doing work, to make sure that that dust doesn't spread. The only thing that's allowed to run is water trucks. We know water trucks is not the only solution. We're not going to rely on them alone for this project. There's other devices. Every site, construction team has someone onsite that's monitoring that weather constantly, and they're in constant communication with Brett, with Barbara, their whole team, about what's going on at the site. If there is some dust coming off the site, then the appropriate people on the construction team are notified to deal with that immediately. There are, there are things that we have on our site that can be implemented. We have reserves of water, we'll have reserves of mulch, hydro seeding. It's really getting ahead of the problem before it becomes one, though. We've seen this site for, we've only owned it since December. It's ours. But we've had discussions with Brett, with Antelope Acres community about the site in the past. We're aware of the history of it. I think the real important thing here is to know that, yes, this is a nuisance site. It's been this way since the 1940s, when agriculture was starting on there, and Antelope Acres didn't exist at that point. It was a dust problem then, and it was a dust problem in 2006, when they were having to clear up these roads. The important thing is, let's make this a better site than it was before. People already have health problems in this community because of the dust. Can we do something and implement a better plan that can help?
I prefer their problems don't get worse.
I agree, yeah.
Well, first of all, that's not accurate. If, I mean, it's accurate what I prefer, but if they have lung disease, it's a progressive disease. But these are fragile people who have lung disease, right? I mean, they're fragile. So Brett, where are you?
Sorry, Brett, dragged you back into this one.
If it starts to go bad, what do you do?
I'm not trying to pass the buck in this situation, but we don't have that, some of that authority. I mean, the city has to be there with us, with their code enforcement and their inspectors. My authority is rather limited, all right?
So Mark, which one of our staff people do that?
We will assign people. I want to talk to staff, find out how it is. But I think something bears mentioning here for some of the people. This is not like the LA Basin, where the Air District is separate from the city and whatever. The governing board of the Air District is the city and the other cities. So we are in constant communication. If Brett has an issue, which he's done multiple times on other issues, he picks the phone up and we have someone deal with it. If we need to have someone out there, you have my word, we will absolutely have someone out there.
So do we have the power to shut the project down if they start?
Absolutely.
Tell me how I do that.
If they're not meeting their mitigation requirements under the approvals, then yes.
But Brett has the ability to find-
I've noticed that about this job, you know that?
Once again, it's not this, Brett's not going to call us and we're going to argue with him. If Brett calls and says, "This is an issue," we're going to shut it down. You know, the beauty of the Antelope Valley is, we do work together.
So what is the criteria for shutting it down? I mean, God forbid that that happens, but I want to know what happens if we do. How do we, what's the criteria? If, you want to answer?
I can take it. If the, if the project is not controlling its fugitive dust as determined there, then we have the ability to take the steps necessary to shut it down. Yes.
So are you guys equipped to notify us?
Yes.
And will you, will you do that for the next two years?
Two years, absolutely. One of the things we've talked about with Garrett, though, is even getting more aggressive than that, and being involved, you know, on a daily basis, basically, to make sure that each step of the process is being handled properly.
All right.
Unlike prior times, when we're out there, you know, doing field inspections periodically.
So how do you pay for that?
Well, Garrett's going to help us pay for that. I pay for that.
All right. So when's that plan going to be in place?
It's in place.
It is?
Yeah. It's in place. It's, I chair the AVA QMD. Brett has worked diligently, making Rule 403 a little bit firmer. We've tried to make it a little bit stronger. We're currently charging the solar companies approximately $40,000 to mitigate the problems and to make sure that we're out there enough. Every solar field has a, I think it's a four-by-eight sheet, that requires the solar company to say, if you see dust coming from this to anybody, if you see dust coming from this project, to call someone from Garrett's firm. If they don't get a response to there, they have the AVA QMD's number underneath that. Brett is then notified. Someone from the AVA QMD goes out there, sees that there is dust, they notify the city, we shut it down. The city shuts it down, and Brett can find them for that. So there's mitigating factors for it.
I'd like that person to be communicating with the residents, whether they're in the city or out of the city, it doesn't matter to me. I want some contact. And, you know, we ought to just put Liz in charge. I mean, she'd shut anybody down. Have you all met Liz? She's the only one who scares me. All right. You guys got to come up, is it Steph? I'm sorry, what was your name?
Steph.
Steph. I take it you're the focal point here, right? For the community?
Yeah, I'm sorry. You need to make it clear.
Yeah, are you the focal point for the community? Are you the big dog?
Yes.
Okay. Then, forget who's the good guy or who's the bad guy. I want you, at the very least, to be working with this person that is working with air quality management to work with the city, so that we have no delay. All right?
Okay.
You should be involved in the process. This only works, I mean, assuming we vote to approve the project, this only works if you recognize the project's coming. How best to make it happen? How best to preserve whatever can be preserved? I'm not going to sit up here and tell you it's going to be Antelope Acres like it used to be. It's just not. But it's the closest to the midpoint I think we can get.
Is it my understanding, is my understanding correct, that if you guys did decide to uphold the decision to approve the CUP tonight, that although the CUP, as is written, has significant shortfalls, we will have the opportunity to work together to overcome that?
Absolutely.
Because our concern is that that isn't going to happen.
Listen, S-Power wants to build a lot more projects.
We know that.
The one way to make certain that doesn't happen is piss me off, all right? And I am going to be upset if the people's health is jeopardized in any way. Fair enough?
Yes.
All right. Brett, does this work?
Yes, sir.
This going to keep them safe?
You're asking a tough question. I think there's a lot of work to be done, and I think if we all work together, I think we can pull it off. But I can't unequivocally tell you that we can do it without working together and developing a plan.
All right, develop a plan that's 100 times better than the last one. Can we do that? Thank you. Is that it? Is that all the cards?
No.
What's your name? You know, he told me I didn't call you, and I told him he was wrong. Come on down.
Happens all the time.
Good evening, and thank you for letting me speak. Can I just start off with my fellow neighbors who are opposed to this? Please stand. This is going to tear up-
That was good.
Tear up my ballot. These are just a few, because it's so late that a lot of them had to leave, but thank you. I have several things. My husband and I just bought a home in Antelope Acres about six months ago. Knowing that this project was going in, we would not have bought out here. We bought for the rule, we bought for the view, for the nighttime skies, many things. And with this project coming in, I get it's coming, it's coming, it's coming. We don't have to like it. My opinion is, you can move it, and I get it's a difficult thing. It shouldn't, we shouldn't be here today. We should be doing soil samples a long time ago. They, it shouldn't even be bought for that zoning, whatever you want to call it, because I'm not into all that. I know that I don't like it going up in my yard, in my neighbors' yards. I know that, I know, I am for solar. I'm just not for solar where it's going to dig up the soil and put my neighbors in harm's way. I'm not okay with that. I'm young enough, I've got animals. We have animals, we have kids, we have older people that are already sick. Money's not that important to me. People's lives are more important.
You get, the money isn't the issue with me.
What would cost a lot to move it?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
The cost of the families.
You're missing it. The goal for the last eight years has been to create the city that can serve as a template for every other city out there to do something about climate disruption. I don't think my grandchildren are going to survive a normal lifespan if we don't do major changes.
Agreed.
And so when I, when I'm listening to the disruption of people's lives, I get it, but you need to get that, I could care less about the money. I could care less if Wall Street makes money or not. I just know what's feasible and what isn't feasible. And the faster we can become that template, the safer we all are. Now, I know that that's a huge dream, but look what's happened because of that huge dream. We're becoming a major center. That isn't really conducive to a rural lifestyle, but it's much better than the alternative of what we were becoming. Right? You get that?
I get it.
Now, Jim, shouldn't they have done disclosures? If you had a project like this coming in, six months before sale? Should they have done what? I didn't hear your question. Shouldn't a Realtor have disclosed this, that this plant was coming in?
Well, it wasn't an approved project. You know, I can't speak for the, whomever was representing this person, but typically, you disclose what you know.
It wasn't a secret.
We purchased in August.
Well, again, you know, Rex, I can't, I can't-
We purchased the end of August.
Excuse me. I can't determine who represented- Excuse me. I can't determine who represented this lady. I see. Okay. You, you might want to look into whether or not there was a proper disclosure before you bought.
Well, I bought now, and I have a huge loan, and I won't be able to sell my home.
That's why you need to talk to somebody who does that kind of law.
And I didn't buy downtown Lancaster. I bought Antelope Bakers so I could live in that.
I get that.
You had said that you don't have the power to stop if it wasn't approved at the last meeting. It could have been stopped.
Well, the, the thing with discretionary power is you have to exercise it in a reasonable fashion. I, I can't just, just, well, I don't like the looks of that, and so, no, you can't do it. If it meets the zoning criteria, I don't think that I, well, I certainly don't have the, the political will to do it. I mean, that's, that's not what I think government should be doing. I think we should be as least intrusive as possible on people's property rights.
Yeah, and 80 feet from their homes is not least intrusive.
I get that. Okay.
And the valley fever's super intrusive. It's airborne, so it's, I mean, it's, you can't-
It, it seems to me that there's no reason why they shouldn't be able to produce less dust than would be there in a high-wind situation. Certainly after it's built, that will be the case. Am I right, Brett?
Yes.
However, during the build.
Well, you're seeing all we're doing about it. I mean, a lot depends on what you do about it, how involved you are.
I'm here. I've been here, and I was at the last one in three hours and-
I know. What you're saying is, what you want me to do is say yes or no. You know, that's not what I'm doing. All right?
A point that you-
Actually, that's not true. What you want me to do is say no. Right?
I want you to be our voice.
I'm not. I'm not. I am not the voice of any segment of the community. I like to think I'm the voice of what's best for the city, what takes the city as far, as close to our goals as possible. And, and that is always, always a question of balancing somebody's interests against somebody else's. But no, it's a mistake to think I'm your voice. I'm not.
Okay. You had stated earlier that the residents would be moved?
No, that's not what I said. I said-
They may be moved in light of-
I'm saying, isn't that something we should be looking at?
So why would you look at moving the residents if it's not a huge danger? If it's such a huge danger-
First of all, I don't know that it is a huge danger yet. That's why I want to bring some experts in and find out, because I don't think anybody's looked at it.
Correct, but it's coming anyway, whether it's a danger or not.
Well, if the danger is there, then what are the mitigation efforts you take to make certain it's less of a danger? Now, it's always going to be a danger to build in the Antelope Valley, always, because the spores are in the soil. Are you suggesting that we just stop building? No, we're not going to do that.
No.
We're going to become a 21st, 22nd century city.
It's the way it's going. I get it. Yeah.
Listen, if, if you wanted somebody to preserve the rural nature of the community, I wasn't the guy to vote. I was never, I never heard the-
I didn't, I didn't, so.
No, I get that. I get that. I, I have a vision for the city that could be different than yours. And it clearly is.
And let's work together.
The best we can.
Right.
All right.
So a resident has been driving past where the school is on 90th, and the workers have total protective cover, masks, whatever, outfits, whatever they wear. How is that not going to be, again, I guess it's a, it's already been spoken on, but it's, it's not a good place to put it, I guess. It's, I don't know.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Okay. I think that's it. Close the public hearing. All right?
No, she's done. She's sorry.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Any discussion? Any questions?
I have a couple of questions for Garrett that I'm concerned about. The, doing this as slow as possible in different sections, you're agreeable to that?
As slow as possible as in taking a phased approach?
Right.
Yes.
And you agree with how Brett has designed it to, to do it?
Yes.
And the northeast corner, can you hold off on that until the, the last part to see if we can find some way to mitigate that piece of property, to see if we can get money to buy it, to find other pieces to last?
We can work with Mark and Jason on that, yes.
Wait a minute. I need candor here.
Yeah. I mean, realistically, we want to build this thing in a, as efficient way as possible. Right? If we have obligations with our power purchase off-takers, then we may have, you know, we are going to have timelines that we need to hit. Will we work to do that and push it to the end as much as possible? Yes, you have my commitment.
Okay. Aren't we the off-taker?
You can be.
Nice sales job. That was good. We're not the off-taker currently, but it's obviously something that they can bid in and we can look at.
Well, while we're at it, can we negotiate the kilowatt cost? Probably not, huh? Go on.
Probably not the fair price. I'm good.
Although, Mark, why aren't we doing that?
Doing what?
Making that part of the approval process. By the look of disgust on the city attorney's face, I guess there's a reason.
No, I, I, we look at, we look at all the projects and what we get the best price. We are a partner with S-Power on a 10-meg project, which you are obviously out there for the groundbreaking, which powers, how many homes in Lancaster? 1,800?
Around that, yeah.
1,800 homes. So we do look when it makes sense based on the price and for our rate payers. When this is upper, and if they have capacity, we may look at that as well, too.
Yeah. I think one thing that comes with developing power across Lancaster is there's a lot of efficiencies to have. So even though there is a project up here on this location, it is sharing the substation costs and other things, so the community gets a cheaper price at that.
So why couldn't we be looking at letting Antelope Bakers become part of community choice and giving them a lower rate because it, to offset the-
It's a great question. I'm sorry for interrupting you, Don. It's a great question. We'd love to. LA County itself is pursuing its own CCA for the unincorporated areas.
Because it's LA County, I see.
Right, but it is something that we are going to aggressively approach LA County with, too, at least regionalizing it. But right now-
Could the supervisor carve them out and put us in a position to do something like that for them?
The Board of Supervisors likely could and let them opt in. I don't know the exact law on how you could split out the county, but yes.
What I'm talking about is figuring out a way to lower your, your, your power cost to such an extent that it offsets the drop in property value. You know, just so you know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, we can approach a supervisor's office. The mayor just spoke at a CCA conference and LA County was there. They're about a year, probably a year, year and a half behind us, but they want to do the same thing. Get you guys cheaper rates with, and more renewable content.
So, Donna, I want you to call your boss.
Got it. Just write it down.
All right. But I'm, I'm serious. I mean, I want to figure out a way to, to mitigate this as much as possible. I don't think it's appropriate that a small group of people bear a disproportionate-
I agree with you 100%.
I'm sorry, what?
I agree with you 100%.
I can't hear you.
I agree with you.
Okay, good, thanks. I always like to hear that. I usually hear that. All right, great. Thank you, Garrett. All right. Anything else?
Mayor, obviously, this is a CUP. Is the council open to getting a progress check back in with homeowners and the people that we've assigned?
Well, I think we should, but I want to, I want to, the first progress report is I want to know what kind of structure did we put together and how, how people are contributing to that. Can we do that?
Yeah. I mean, it's easy to, again, I'm not laying blame on anybody, but it's real easy for people on both sides of the aisle to nod their head one way or the other. But if we're going to keep everybody accountable, maybe we ought to have a check-in.
I agree. I agree. It's a good idea.
Okay.
Okay. Well, first, we'll hear back from staff as to what the structure is and what the reporting times will be. Okay. Anyone else? You all good? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution number 17-08, upholding the planning commission decision approving conditional use permit 1602A and conditional use permit 16-02B, as well as B, adopt resolution 1709, upholding planning commission decision approving conditional use permit 16-07A and conditional use permit 16-07B.
I'll second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, let's take a short break, and I mean really short. We don't need to. Okay, we're back in session. Let's move PH1 to next meeting, or?
Mr. Mayor, I would recommend we open the public hearing on PH1 and then continue it to, to when we bring CC3 back, because it pertains to CC3.
Oh, that's where we got that.
And it doesn't make sense to proceed with it tonight.
All right, so that's what I said.
So I do need you to open the public hearing, though.
Okay, so public hearing's open, and we're going to move PH1 back on the calendar when CH3 comes up, right?
Correct.
Okay, thanks. Everybody good with that? Good. City manager, any announcements?
We just have one, in the interest of time, we'll wait on the Morton video till next meeting. We have one short video promoting the airshow, which will be the 24th and 25th weekend, 25th and 26th weekend.
Did you get the Blue Angels to change their mind and let-
That was the chaos. Ours will be better.
What's up, the county? It's theirs.
I was, I was going to say.
That was a mic drop. We can't add to that.
Wow. Anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you. City clerk?
This is the time to address the city council agency and authority on non-agendized matters. Speaker cards can be found on the back table of the council chambers. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter may be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Okay. Michael Reeves?
He left. He wanted to tell Parks and Rec what a great job they did.
That's what he told me to tell them. Michelle Starkey?
Hello, everybody. I come here with another complaint from Lancaster Mobile Homes Park, Lancaster Estates Mobile Home Parks on 25th and I. We've been having quite more issues than we'd like to. There's a few issues. One is the pass-through fee. According to civil, according to the code book, that we're allowed to get the pass-through fee, but it needs a start and end date and a reason why it was there. One, that was never opposed, that was never given to us, any reason. Another thing that's going in our park is illegal rent raising. There's people who are in leases and those who are not, and the new manager decided that they were going to do a full increase of rent throughout the entire park.
They have to come for over a certain amount, they have to come to us. We can, I don't know if we're aware of that particular issue.
I don't, I haven't, this is the first I've heard of that one.
So we can look into it.
We can look into that.
So why can't Liz get a handle on this trailer park?
That actually is Liz's areas of responsibility and expertise in terms of the rent portion. There is an active case on it as well, too.
Also, there's something the manager's doing, is charging late fees. She'll say that she doesn't get people's checks, and I'm representing it about 30 houses, 30 homes in the park. And she says she's not getting checks, that the people are not paying their rent, which have paid their rent, and then she adds late charges to their, to their rent bills.
Well, can't, can't they do that?
Pardon?
If they're not, if they don't pay their rent on time?
They do pay their rent. There are several people who do pay their rent on time, and then she, she states, "Oh, well, we don't get the check. We're going to have to give you, you're going to have to give us another check, and we're going to give you a late fee." So, and then there's times where she's running people's checks through twice, and they're getting late fees through their banks.
How do you run a check through twice?
It's a wire fraud. It's money orders. She does money orders. She tries to run them in twice, or, what are the other ones called?
Sometimes if they don't get-
Cashiers' checks.
Yeah, I don't know in that particular situation. Sometimes if a check doesn't clear or get paid once, they run it again. I don't know, I'm not saying that's that particular case, but banks do do that sometimes, or you would know.
That's correct.
Yeah, why am I answering? You're the banker.
There's also, the managers are stating that there's only one realtor allowed to sell homes. Teresa Mika has been given the name through several people, stating that she is the only realtor allowed in our mobile home park. And there's several people that know that that is illegal to do. Another thing, Connie Leva, Senator Connie Leva, she has meetings about mobile home parks, and Kimberly Clarkson and I go to them. And she stated, from weights and measures, that one trick that the managers are starting to do is tamper with the electric and water meters. And sure enough, several people have come to my home stating that their bill is $150, what they're used to paying. So we've had to have weights and measures come out several times. As a matter of fact, I had him come out to my house, and he said, "I've come out here almost every single day. There are so many people calling from your park." Understandable, they're getting raises of $100 on their bills, which they're-
You know, this can't all be BS.
I, I'm not saying it's BS in any respect. What I am saying is-
So why aren't people in jail?
I, my understanding is there are ongoing investigations. I'm going to kick that over to Lee.
There's, there's several issues that are at play. There's things that have been resolved, and then there's other things that caught up. It's an ongoing issue, the new chairman manager, and then the residents of the park that were prior to this management. The aspect of the original embezzlement issue is that you dealt with. There's other issues that have been forwarded to the sheriff's department, to, I'm sorry, I didn't have my mic on. I didn't think I needed it. Don't we all say that now? Okay, anyway, that they're managing from, but there's also limited jurisdiction as it relates to private property and mobile home parks. Plus, there's some exclusivity as it relates to the law, as landlord-tenant issues, other than what we typically work with other rental-in situations. So, and they're all well versed on this. Ms. Clarkson has done a lot of research. There's discussions-
Okay, okay, okay. Listen, I want you to find a contingency fee for, keep it away from me. I don't want to be involved in this election or anything like that. I don't want to have any conflict issues, but I want the city to work with, with whatever firm we bring in to help these people to, to fix this problem. But I want it fixed. And, and it really isn't an issue to me of management, it's an issue of the owners of the park. I mean-
Well, we've written the owners several letters.
I get it. I get it. Let's continue to work with them, but I want, I want a vicious dog law firm on this.
Okay.
All right? Good. Thank you. I think that might change some things, okay?
I would hope so. Like I said, I'm representing it about 30 people. A lot of the people are actually afraid to come. of the people are actually afraid to come. Um, she had started eviction processes on my husband, and I, for absolutely no reason whatsoever, so I'm not afraid of her as of right now. But there are plenty of people who, her and her husband, come and bully and harass several people. I just, Sunday, I just had someone come over. Like I said, I have a list of people and numbers.
I don't, I don't know what else I can do.
No, that's fine. That's fine.
Other than that, unless somebody comes up with some alternative methodology, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Kimber, Kimberly Clarkson?
And now for something a little bit different, but it does have to do with Lancaster Estates Mobile Home Park. First of all, I do have to thank Mr. Durico and our city attorney because they, they have been working and they have been being very receptive. However, I think the council needs to know about a particular problem. So, I'll start with the saying, you know, every city dollar is important and should be used wisely. I think we agree. Every minute of sheriff time is important and expensive and should be used widely. The two managers, Joe and Stacy Lamont at Lancaster Estates Mobile Home Park, I call them, you know, the, uh, the criminals, the gang members, because what they do is they call our Lancaster sheriffs to my door four times, and I have given a great deal of documentation substantiating claiming that I am engaging in criminal activity. I know so many officers here in Lancaster, we're on a first-name basis, they come, they listen, and they say, no, that's nothing. We're not even going to do a report. I'll go talk to the managers. It's no big deal. In the meantime, not only do they send the sheriffs prior to sheriffs, they send Acme Security, our onsite security company. They always do it when my husband's at work, or when Michelle's husband's at work. Here's the problem. Most recently, on the fifteenth of February, there was a stop sign right on my lot, on my property. It had been banging and making noises. You know what it sounds like with a hammer on a tin can? Because there were two cracks in it. Now, the managers are also managing a park in Las Vegas, Nevada. They're not around a lot. Joe Lamont is not there more than one day a week. So, in the middle of the night, it was making so much noise. Number one, I thought it was going to fly off and probably kill somebody or damage a car or my home. Or number two, it's such, such a problem. My dogs are howling, other neighbors are complaining, nobody can sleep. So, I went out the next morning with duct tape. Now, this is a piss-poor way to solve a problem, but to repair it, I figured out that all I had to do was tape from one side around the back of the stop sign on the white border really tight. Voila. It was great. Joe Lamont comes by, and he sees it, he stops, and I go right out and say, hey, Joe, let me tell you why I did that. What do you mean, why you did this? This is, this is vandalism. I'm going to report you. This is vandalism. I'm taking pictures right now, and I am reporting you.
Kimberly.
And he did.
Look at the number of people.
I know.
I'm assigning a lot of resources to this.
Okay.
Deal with the resources.
Okay, I'm just saying that, um...
I can't do it anymore.
I have current traumatic stress disorder, not post-traumatic, it's current, because I never know when they're going to come pounding on the door and making something up. And if I hear one more time that it's a civil issue, I'm going to scream, because not everything in this park is civil.
It may very well, it may very well be a civil issue, and you should...
No, but it's a waste of sheriff time, and I've turned in the documentation.
And I'm wondering why they're not looking at false police reports.
Already being done, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Mr. Durico. I just wanted the council to know that it's one more thing with this park.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Fran, tell me something good.
Okay. Hi, how are you?
Hi.
Hope you're having a good day. Good evening, everybody. I know you all want to go home. I'll make what I have to say real quick. I just have a quick little question about the senior center, um, extension building. Uh, the drawings, architectural drawings are supposed to be had done this month, and people have been asking me, what's happening? Because nobody knows what's going on.
Um, we've met with the county and the builder. The contract was awarded to Sawyer.
Yeah.
And I don't know the status of any meetings, Jeff, if you know when the next meeting is, but the contract has been awarded and they're in play.
Because there was a, you had also got a new design, uh, architectural designer for the, the building, and that's what you were waiting for.
Correct. Correct, yeah. I can talk you off to the meeting, but we, we're starting to have meetings right now, so...
Okay.
I know the last time you wanted to be involved in that, so...
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. That's it. Thank you, and good night, everybody. Sleep tight. Don't let the bed bugs bite.
Thank you, Fran. David, last but not least.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, good evening. Mayor, kudos on another good night. This, I love how you help the people, and, um, not everybody is always happy, but it sounds like they understand the Antelope Valley Acres, people that we're trying. So, that, that was, that was really good. Um, I want to be quick. My main reason to come up in, after comments like this, uh, we're having a sale at the Lancaster Library that everyone's invited. It's our biannual sale. It runs all week, and if you love books, come. You get beautiful books for fifty cents, and the highest-priced ones are a dollar. So, if you love books, come on over to the library anytime this week and see what we're doing. Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Uh, council agency comments? Everybody good? I'm good. I've got nothing to say for myself. I don't think. Did I have anything I was supposed to announce?
I guess we'll have to wait for Carol to answer that question.
She is watching this. She made, made it a point of telling me she was going to watch it. I don't know what she was trying to convey with that. Okay, the City Council meeting is adjourned until Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen, at five PM. Carol, my day is done, and I'm coming home.